Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Township of West Orange Planning Board Meeting April 2nd, 2025, 7:30 PM via Zoom. Notice of this meeting was given to the Township Clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board and Township Website Calendar, and sent to the West Orange Chronicle on the Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noted to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new meetings, no new matters will start after 10:30 PM. May I ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic.
The Republic.
One nation.
One nation.
Indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. The next Planning Board Special Meeting will be held April 9th, 2025, at 7 o'clock PM via Zoom. The next Planning Board Special Meeting after that will be held April 30th, 2025, at 6:30 PM in person at Town Hall. There will be no Zoom. The next Planning Board Regular Meeting after that will be held May 7th, 2025, at 7:30 PM via Zoom. Would you have the roll call, please, Yamalat?
Mr. Alpert?
Here.
Mr. Cardoza?
Present.
Ms. Caffrey?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Wilks? Mr. Morgan? Councilwoman Scarpah?
Present.
Mayor McCartney?
Present.
Mr. Waino?
Present.
Chairman Bagow?
Here. Thank you very much.
Yes, for the record, Mr. Smarado will be recused from the application.
Thank you. We have minutes to resolve PB 24-20 Turtle Bags Duel, Lemur, and Tortoise exhibit draft resolution. I make a motion that we adopt the resolution sending to the Town Council that this application complies with the master, the extent of the master plan. Do I have a second on the motion?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Garino, seconds. On the motion, Yamalat?
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
He's.
Yes. Yes, I'm good, yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagow?
Yes. Motion carries. Motion, resolution is adopted. Thank you. And now we're going to clean up administratively resolutions that were passed January 27, memorialized January 22nd, 25, 25, in our reorganization meeting for our professionals. First, I would like to recommend to the Board that we adopt the contract and re-resolve to hire Diana McGovern as the Planning Board Attorney. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Mayor McCartney, seconds on the motion, Yamalat?
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Yes, resolution passes. And I recommend that we engage, hire the Nishuane Group as our consulting planner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor McCartney, seconds on the motion.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
I'm going to abstain.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagow?
Yes, resolution is adopted. I recommend we engage consulting engineer, CME firm, as one of our consulting engineers. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who's second to that?
Mayor McCartney.
Mayor McCartney, seconds. On the motion, Yamalat?
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagow?
Yes, resolution is adopted. I make a motion, we appoint another consulting engineer, the Matrix New World Firm. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Garino, seconds on the motion, Yamalat?
Was that one of the resolutions, Diana?
Which one? I'm sorry.
For the Matrix New World?
Yeah.
This would be for environmental cleanups.
There were four resolutions I asked if we put on the agenda. I believe that there are.
Yeah, there are. There's CME, there's CME.
You have to look in the body of the resolution. It's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 down is Matrix.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Matrix New World.
There's Matrix, Nishuane, and.
CME and you.
And me.
Perfect. Sorry. I'm sorry, who's second?
Vice Chairman Garino, seconds.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Yes, the resolution is agreed to. Thank you. And Yamalat, just in the body, just make sure that it's noted that all of these were resolved on January 22nd, 2025, on the reorganization meeting of the Planning Board.
Yeah, it's a follow-up to the.
It's a follow-up. And these will be sent to the Town Council. Thank you.
In case there's any questions.
Diana, would you, I'm sorry, you say?
No, I'm hoping it clears up the confusion.
Diana, would you swear in our professional?
Yeah, I'm trying to find them. Okay, Jerry, and who do we have from? Oh, Phil Scott, okay. Do you please raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm? Tell, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth this evening?
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Outstanding. Application before us, PB 24-14, 172-174 Main Street, LLC, Block 83, Lot 1 and 5.01, Zone B1, 172, 174 Main Street. The applicant, 172, 174 Main Street, LLC, proposes to construct a three-floor addition to an existing two-story building and convert the building to a mixed-use building. The proposed mixed-use building will contain 2,824 square feet of office space on the first floor and a total of seven residential units on the second and third floor. Additionally, 26 existing onsite parking spots will be provided. Mr. Zebrow for the applicant.
Good evening. Board members, my name is Tyler Zebrow, partner with Spiral Harrison and Nelson. I'm here representing the applicant, 172, 174 Main Street. Just to clarify, the applications to add a single story, converting this two-story building to a three-story. Tonight I have here are Planner, John McDonough, Donna Bullock, our engineer, Patrick Downey, our traffic engineer, and I think that's everybody. I also have Mr. Cox with us. He's representative of the applicant, and he's available to answer any questions. So first, I just wanted to call Donna Bullock again, just to clarify a few points that were raised in the review letters that we received earlier today.
Chairman, should I re-swear Ms. Bullock in?
Um. You go right ahead, yes.
Okay, Ms. Bullock, if you please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
And the what-deer still holds from the previous meeting. And Ms. Bullock, you are still licensed in the state of New Jersey actively?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Mr. Zebrow, go right ahead.
Okay, Ms. Bullock, did you have an opportunity to review the review letters that we received earlier today from the Township Engineer and Planner?
Yes, I have.
All right, if you could just speak to the the question that was raised regarding the sewer and sewage calculations?
Certainly. We're referring to a letter dated August 13th, 2024, with an addendum on April 1st, 2025. It's an engineering review, and I would like to discuss item 2.17 on page 2 of 3.
Ms. Bullock, who provided the letter?
Matrix New World.
Perfect, thank you.
So, within this item 2.17, they're referring to items 36 and 37, which are requesting that we show the sanitary sewer laterals on the plan, where their locations are. We have provided calculations for the existing flows versus the proposed flows, and we do did note at the last testimony, and this memo does say that there will be an increase to the proposed flows to the sanitary sewer system. And the testimony I'm providing right now is that we will show that connection point and the existing sewer lateral, and we will provide calculations to show that the lateral that we're tying into can handle the increase in the sanitary sewer flows.
And we would request that be a condition of approval.
Okay, so that's a condition.
Good. And Ms. Bullock, if you could also discuss the, we had some questions about the site triangles. I understand on your initial engineering plans, we had a smaller, I guess, detail of the site triangle plan. Have you had a chance to address that concern that was raised at the last meeting?
Yes, I have. What I have done is I've superimposed the site plan onto a Google Earth aerial, and I would like to share that. If that's okay.
We'll have to mark that, Diana.
Oh, is this new? We didn't get this ahead of time, right?
It's, it's new to the extent that it's a blow-up of a prior detail with an aerial overlay.
Okay, so we're gonna mark this for exhibit, then. We'll call this A. We don't have any outside of what's on the agenda right now. Just to be clear, it'll be A1, and you'll send that over to our Board Secretary, so it can be made part of the record and put on the agenda. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to share the enlarged site plan with an aerial. I think I just said share now?
Yep, you got it.
Do you see it?
Yes.
I don't see it. That, okay. So what this is, is it's an aerial display and site triangle easement plan, and it is our site over in the aerial, and I've shown the full extents of the site triangles that are required for access, egressing a site. So if you're pulling out and you want to make a right-hand turn, you'll be, you'll be looking left for 390 feet. And if you're pulling out to make a left turn, you'll be looking toward the right 335 feet. So you can see that these dash lines are the point of eye observation, set back 14.4 feet from the access point onto the road. And looking in both, both directions, you can see, now I'm gonna zoom in a little bit on this. And when we zoom in, we could see that the site triangle does clip our corner of the property by 2.2 feet. But you could also see that in front of the property, there are some, some trees that are shown in the aerial view. But as you look down the road, there's nothing else that appears to be in the way as far as, you know, obviously, there can't be any buildings within the right-of-way. There doesn't appear to be any other trees or, or huge items that would block the view up and down the street for, for exiting this property.
And just to be clear, the, it means the ingress and egress to this property, that's not changing. This is pre-existing, correct?
Yes, yes. This access drive has been there since the development of the property. The point of exit is the same point that has been there in the past.
Okay, I have nothing further from Ms. Bullock.
Okay, great. Vice Chairman Garino, do you have any questions from Ms. Bullock on her testimony?
Not this time, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions from Ms. Bullock on her testimony?
No, thank you.
Councilperson Scarpah, do you have any questions from Ms. Bullock on her testimony?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Alpert, do you have any questions from Ms. Bullock on her testimony?
No, thank you.
Mr. Klein, do you have any question from Ms. Bullock on her testimony?
Yes. Ms. Bullock, can you tell me why the distance in one direction is 335 and the other direction's 390, why it's not the same in both directions?
Because when, when you're, when you're looking to, when you're looking to turn out in one direction, you're looking at the oncoming traffic on the same side of the road. When you're looking to make a right, looking to make a left turn, you look right, you're looking across the street down a distance. So the, there's a highway standards book that provides these distances, and it's based on the, the speed limit on the street, which is 35 miles per hour here. So they give us those, those offsets. So we have to offset. If we're, if we're gonna make a right-hand turn and we're looking left, we have to offset this 390 feet for the one side, just because it's not coming from both the same lanes. You have oncoming traffic, and, you know, from each direction, from whatever side you're looking down the street, oncoming traffic in the lane that you're pulling out in, or do you have the oncoming traffic on the other side of the road that you'll need to see visibility in the other direction to get into that second lane?
What's the speed that 335 feet is based on?
35 miles per hour.
What's the speed that 390 feet is based on?
35 miles per hour.
You're looking at the Ash tow?
Yes.
Intersection site distance for passenger cars?
Yes.
Then I gotta get a new version. All right, I got an old version. My version says for 30 miles an hour, it's 335 feet, and for 35 miles an hour, it's 390 feet. So, all right. I'll wait for Mr. Scott to chime in, maybe.
All right, I'm gonna grab my book real quick. It's right here.
That's, I just have never done two different directions, two different distances, but.
Oh, oh, okay.
And you're measuring back how far from where to start? Where's the driver's eye?
The driver's eye is right here.
Right, what is, what is that a distance from?
That's 14.4 feet from the, the white line where the person would park, the closest to the road, where they would then set to look either right or left to pull out.
Right, 14 and a half feet from the edge of travelway, right?
Yes. And I do have the Ash tow in front of me, and it does have for 35 miles per hour, 390 feet looking right to make a left turn, and 335 feet looking left to make a right turn.
Okay, no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Mr. Cardoza, do you have any questions from Ms. Bullock on testimony?
No, thank you.
Ms. Caffrey, do you have any questions from Ms. Bullock on testimony?
Yes, I do have a question. Ms. Bullock, do we need to be concerned at all about the cars? It appears that there's parking, on-street parking on Main Street. So the cars that would be parked within the site triangle? How should we be looking at that?
Um. There's, there is parking. There are height restrictions that allow for, you know, blockage up to a certain height. I actually don't know the exact height requirement, but it's, I really can't safely answer that question. I know what you're saying. But we, we can't have no parking within our site triangle easement, because then our neighbor will have to have it, and then the other neighbor will have to have it, and then there'll be no parking at all along the street. So there is somewhere, I, I can't say exactly where it's from, but that would permit cars to be within a site triangle easement for either parking or travel.
Yeah, I'm kind of looking at like street view now, and I'm trying to see if we have striping along Main Street, any other locations for a similar scenario. Yeah, I'm just curious about that. I think it would be hard to see when you're pulling out, if a car is parked, you know, like in front of the fence, for instance. Okay, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Mr. Scott, do you have any questions from Ms. Bullock on her testimony?
Excuse me, no questions. I do just wanna make one comment with regard to the site triangle. If we're looking at the site triangle, turning left out of the parking lot, you'll see that a small amount of the site triangle would kind of clips the, the adjacent properties on lots 3 and 4. So just to, in response to their comment that there's nothing in the site triangle, there is just a small, yes, that small area that's, you know, blocking the site triangle. But I don't see that as being a major issue as, you know, the site triangle is very long, and it gives adequate space or site distance for people exiting out of the property.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions from Ms. Bullock on her testimony?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions from Ms. Bullock on her testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions from Ms. Bullock on her testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
We have some. Can we take down the Google map? Jamie C., please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Jamie Copperthwaite. I live at 11 Edge Hill Road. I did come on about 10 minutes late, so I apologize if you said this. At the last meeting, there was a suggestion that there might have to be striping in the parking lots, and I know you guys are at just the exact amount of parking spaces that you need. Were you able to find out, was that done? To find out whether there would need to be striping in the parking lot, and if there were striping, would you be able to meet the requirements for having the appropriate amount of parking? It seemed like you couldn't really lose any space in that parking lot. Was that done? And is that pertinent? That's my question. Thank you.
If I understand your question, we are proposing 20, we are proposing 22 standard parking stalls. But at the last meeting, we were asked to eliminate a parking stall that was located to the front east side of the building, so that there'd be ample turnaround for people who are at the, at the end of the drive, who need to do a K-turn and come out. So the testimony at last time was to provide two additional EV parking spaces. As you can see, that we, we showed on the diagram. So what that is, is we will have one handicap space. We will have two EV spaces, which is a credit of two spaces. We will have 21 standard parking spaces for a total of 24, which equates to 26 parking spaces. Did that answer your question, sir?
Um, no, and maybe you're not the person to ask, but I thought the chairperson of the board said that they were gonna have a fire and Marshall talked about being able to reach, either reach the place, or you know, what, what kind of suitability for a fire truck to get in there if it needed to, or if it didn't need to, and if it did need to, there may need to be striping. And that seemed like that would cause a problem.
Mr. Chairman, may I explain? There was a condition that the Board suggested, and the, this, Jamie, I don't, I don't know how to say your last name. What that is, is it's a condition, if this matter is approved, that they'll have to satisfy where the fire official will go look at it and indicate where the striping should be, and if they can't comply with the condition, they'd have to come back to the Board unnoticed to everybody. Another condition that the Board did require was that the parking lot was going to be completely redone and striped for the parking spaces to be added. I thought that was one of your, your questions of this engineer. That was already a condition put in by the Board, but the fire striping, that comes later.
Okay, I was talking about the fire stripping, so that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions from Ms. Bullock on her testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have someone else. Hang on. We have Stan Shapiro. State your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi. My name is Stanley Shapiro. My address is 12 Edge Hill Road.
Go right ahead, sir.
So a question, you know, I know that there is an auto body shop very close by to this, to this property and the entrance and exit. And, and I've seen, you know, that tow trucks are often going to that site, you know, and then sometimes double parking. Was any consideration given to the obstruction from the sightlines from, from high or large vehicles such as tow trucks that would be parking or double parking right on the, on the, you know, I guess the right side of the vehicle, I mean, right side of the property as, you know, to us facing, you know, as you're facing into the, to the driveway? And how that might bear on the requisite sightline easements or sightline requirements? I'm not sure what, how that works.
I can simply say again that the site triangles are there for evaluating permanent structures that are fixed in place that can't be removed, that may be something that will block someone's visibility from exiting the site. Moving traffic, parked cars, they come and go. And again, I would have to ask, you know, our traffic engineer, what statute that would come from that, that would state how cars can't be totally associated with the site triangle since, since they're mostly in a moving motion.
Okay, so, so I'm understanding correctly that you didn't consider at all the, the possibility of, of large vehicles being parked or double parked in close proximity?
We're, we're not required to consider that. When we look at the site triangle, we're looking at fixed features. We're looking at oversized trees. We're looking at huge mailbox posts and fixtures. We're looking for retaining walls that might extend out into that site triangle easement. Anything that's fixed in place is what this study is typically used for.
Okay, but you're, you're, I would disagree with you as to what, you know, you're required to and what the Board should be considering in terms of the safety of the public and the, and the member, and the, you know, the individuals going in and out. So you're saying, so you keep answering, saying that you're not requiring it, and I would like to have a clear answer, yes or no? And I, and it sounds like the answer is no, that you did not consider it at all. I know one of the Board members asked you about parked vehicles, and you answered with regard to the, that you couldn't do anything about the, the height of parked cars, but they're not so large. But I happen to know from experience that there are some very large vehicles, particularly off the top of my head, I can say.
Sure, you're testifying. I'm gonna stop you.
No, I'm asking her. I want her to give a direct answer to the question. It's a simple yes or no. Did you not consider it at all? Because it's, because, because the, the facts are that they are in that proximity.
Sir, you can ask the question. Let her answer the question, please.
Please.
I cannot answer yes or no. I would have to study the, the traffic, the geometric design of highway and streets traffic. I would have to study and see where the background information is on, on how they developed the site triangle easement and, and what its primary use is for. That's, that's beyond just a simple yes or no answer from the criteria of putting a site triangle easement on any property to evaluate the visibility from pulling out left or pulling out right to have permanent obstructions that may block one's visibility in the way.
So I, I understood your question is to do you that if you wanted to under, investigate the question of parked or double parked large vehicles, you would have to do something in the future. So, so that, that doesn't, that, I don't know why you can't answer my question, yes or no, about what you actually actually have done in terms of your study that you're presenting here today?
Let me, let me just interject for a second, Ms. Bullock, before, before you answer. The double parked vehicles are a function of the police policing. They're not allowed, vehicles are not allowed to be double parked along the avenue. So let's take that out of the equation. Now you can go and answer the question based on large vehicles, as he asked. Go right ahead, Ms. Bullock.
Um. I, I am not a traffic. I am not a traffic engineer. Um, I, my experience in traffic engineering is putting uh,
Did I say she's usually got my time? She just has to say yes or no?
It's okay.
I have another question.
Sir, sir, relax. She's gonna answer the question. Go right ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Bullock.
Again, it's a geometric figure that I put on a site plan. Um, I'm not a traffic engineer. And I can't answer that question because I don't know the actual uh, definition of why that site triangle is in place and what it evaluates unless I talk to another traffic engineer or or, you know, researched. I I I don't wanna misrepresent saying yes or no under oath when I really don't know the answer, sir.
Okay, you have another question, sir?
Uh, yes, uh, by the, I would note that she didn't answer the question of what she did. So uh, the uh, my next question is, did you do any um, observational testing as to how long uh, you know, on um, at different times of the day, on the average, a vehicle trying to exit that parking area would have to wait for an opening, given the traffic patterns at that, you know, during the course of the day on Main Street right there?
Um, I I have not. I'm not a traffic engineer. You're gonna have to wait to talk to our traffic engineer about what uh, studies he may have uh, performed uh, in that regard. Um, that's uh, that's not my expertise.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do any of the members of the public have any questions from Ms. Bullock on her testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Jason Hunter. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, Jason Hunter, seventeen Lynnwood Way.
Go right ahead, sir.
Real quick question for you. Uh, you're saying you can take a left and a right out of that parking area, but isn't that a double line? Can you take a left out of there?
Um, as far as I know, is the history of the accessibility on and off the site, yes.
Is it against the traffic laws?
I can answer that. It's not.
I'm gonna interject. This is, she's answering based on mechanics. The law may prohibit that, which is something else, but based on mechanics, she's providing information.
Can I add something? The law doesn't prohibit it.
Oh. Do you have any other questions, sir?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Ms. Bullock on her testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any yet.
Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Bullock. Next.
You're welcome.
Yeah, next I would like to call um, our uh, traffic engineer, Patrick, whose last name escapes me right now. Patrick Downey.
Hey, right here.
Okay. Can we take down the clock so I can see Mr. Downey and give him? So sorry. It's okay. Not that I can really see him, but hey, Mr. Downey, if you please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Mrs. Zeb, will you wire him, please?
Uh, Mr. Downey, um, can you take me through some of your uh, educational background?
Absolutely. I have a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering from Rowan University. Um, a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey, as well as Pennsylvania. A professional traffic operations engineer in addition to that. And I've testified before dozens of other landing boards throughout New Jersey.
Okay, and your license is active in the state of New Jersey presently?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. Uh, so I'm just gonna go through um, kind of the key findings of the traffic impact and parking assessment prepared by my office dated February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, pertains to both the traffic generation and the parking demand of this particular proposal. Uh, so I'm starting with the traffic impact portion. Uh, we looked at the industry standard trip generation rates, which are those published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Uh, the boards likely heard them reference some number of applications. Um, based on their uh, projections for this change in use, is actually a net reduction in traffic for this particular project. The reason being that while a story is being added, uh, floor number two is being converted from what is presently office to uh, residential, which has a lesser traffic impact. Uh, so in a net overall sense, is actually a reduction peak hour trip generation as a result of this project. Um, even if we throw that aside for a moment and looked at this as a a brand new project, you know, over vacant land, the trip generation would still be nominal, uh, peak hour trip generations of ten trips or less uh, during the peak hours of the week. Uh, to put that in perspective, New Jersey DOT would identify one hundred peak hour trips as a threshold of what you would consider significant and worthy of further analysis. Uh, so from all metrics, um, it's our professional opinion, there would not be a perceptible traffic impact from this project. Uh, in terms of parking, you heard alluded to in our engineer's testimony a moment ago. Uh, but a total of twenty-five parking spaces are required for the combination of office and residential components of the project. The proposed parking supply is twenty-five spaces, which complies with that uh, in consideration of the extra credit you get for the provision of the EV make ready parking spaces. Uh, additionally, just to add some context throughout the area of the site, there's numerous NJ Transit stops, uh, some mass transits available. It's a fairly pedestrian conducive environment with good sidewalk connectivity and a mix of residential and commercial opportunities. All factors that reduce automobile dependency, both for employees of this office space and for residents for the residential portion, uh, which in turn had the uh, capacity to reduce uh, the trip generation and the parking demand even further. Uh, I will just touch on briefly. Uh, there was some discussion previously about the site triangles. I just wanted to throw a couple additional factors into that uh, discussion. First is when you look at our driveway, uh, it has a couple of unique benefits. The first is it's an existing condition. It's really not being modified in any way uh, as part of this project in terms of sightlines. In fact, there's gonna be less traffic using the driveway, so I would say that's an improvement. Geometrically, uh, the the site is actually quite a bit steep, so the driver approaching the road from the driveway is actually sat pretty high relative to the road. So that gives them better visibility and the ability to potentially even see over some potential obstructions, parked vehicles in the area. Uh, and some of the site triangles that were discussed before, uh, just not to get too technical, but those are intersection sight distance. Essentially, it's um, a little bit more than what's actually required for just a safe operation that uh, that minimum is known as stopping sight distance, uh, which is only about two hundred and fifty feet for a design speed of thirty-five miles per hour. So I would say the site triangles shown on the plan are conservative in a number of ways. Uh, and really, it's it's not impacted by part of this project, but I just wanted to add my two cents on that factor as well. Uh, so overall, uh, little to no traffic impact as a result of this project. Complying on parking, it's a, you know, a fairly great project from a traffic perspective alone.
Okay, and uh, Ms. Mr. Downey, if you could just um, in connection with the site triangles, do those come from a book? The distances?
Yeah, so the industry standard ones are those published by Ashdod. Those are the ones that were referenced before. Uh, and like I mentioned, the ones shown on the plan, I would say, are even a little bit conservative compared to what is actually required for safe operation.
Okay, and that's that's the only requirements for putting a site triangle on a plan. You look at the book and then you place the triangle at the correct distances?
Correct. You wanna make sure it's free of fixed obstructions, um, parked vehicles, you know, as we're discussing, an interesting situation uh, in urban environments. It's essentially an impractical um, impractical requirement to uh, prohibit parking within them because it would effectively prohibit parking throughout every urban area, uh, everywhere where driveways are permitted for not just our use, but every other driveway. Um, and considering the grade of our driveway, I would say this driveway is better equipped to handle uh, the presence of parked vehicles than most would be.
Okay, so so there's nominal consideration given given to transient off-site conditions such as parked vehicles?
Correct, yes.
Right. I have nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Downey.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Guarino, do you have any questions?
Um, just a second, Mr. Chairman, um. No, not at this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions from Mr. Downey on his testimony?
None at this time.
Thank you. Councilperson Scarp, do you have any questions from Mr. Downey on his testimony?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Uh, can Al, Mr. Alford, do you have any questions for Mr. Uh, Downey on his testimony?
I do not.
Mr. Klein, do you have any questions for Mr. Downey on his testimony?
Yeah, just a quick one. So, Mr. Downey, um, the parking requirement of twenty-five parking spaces, that includes the residential and the office at the same time?
Yes, that's the sum of the two.
So can you speak a little bit about how the parking spaces will be managed? In other words, in the in the morning, as the residents are leaving the site and the office workers are arriving? And then in the afternoon, as the office workers are leaving and the residents are coming back? Can we talk a little bit about maybe shared parking or or how they're gonna assign parking spaces in the parking lot?
Yeah, so it's really a twofold question. First is about how the parking demands interact with each other. That's that shared parking effect you alluded to. Um, so this project actually provides enough parking to satisfy both of the uses requirements uh, directly added to each other. In reality, an office and residential use don't actually experience their peak parking demand at the same time. Obviously, for the residential, it's overnight when people are home uh, for the night to sleep. And in office, in the middle of the day, where those residents are off at work and school, et cetera. Uh, so I would say it's conservative that we've actually satisfied the two uh, together. Um, but yes, the same parking space could in theory service both. Um, I would defer, I guess, uh, to our site engineer as far as if there's any plan to actually sign or manage those spaces. I'm not aware of any interaction uh, of that nature. But given the the available parking supply, I don't even think it's required for a functional operation for this use.
So what would you say about um, visitor parking? I think that may have come up last month. Uh, people were asking what would happen if somebody's gonna come visit somebody in one of these apartments? Do you have enough parking for that?
Yes, that visitor parking component is actually built into the parking requirement for residential. Uh, those requirements are set forth by the RSIS, the Residential Site Improvement Standards. And those rates, uh, that some of the board members might be familiar with, uh, you know, one point eight spaces per unit or two spaces per unit, et cetera. They actually have a component built in there that accounts for visitor parking uh, of half a space per unit.
That's all for me.
Thank you, Mr. Godos. Do you have any questions from Mr. Downey on his testimony? You're you're muted, sir.
My apologies. No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Tafford, do you have any questions from Mr. Downey on his testimony?
No, I do not. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions from Mr. Downey on his testimony?
Not at this time.
Mr. Scott, do you have any questions for Mr. Downey on his testimony?
Uh, yes, uh, I'm just not sure if I missed it or not, but uh, Mr. Downey, can you clarify whether or not um, cars can make the left turn out of that parking lot, being that it is a double on?
Yes, uh, so they can, both in the existing and proposed conditions. Uh, when you have a striped center line, you are permitted to make left turns toward private driveways. Uh, it's the opposite case for a public street intersection. So if you see an intersection with a solid double yellow, it's actually uh, not permitted in that case, but for driveways it is, yes.
Thank you. That's all I have for this.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions from Mr. Downey on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Stan Shapiro. Please state your name and address again for the record.
Uh, yes, Stanley Shapiro, um, twelve Edge Hill Road.
Thank you. Right ahead, sir.
So when you did your um, when you were saying that you you came to the conclusion that um, that uh, it was not going to wait, let me see, uh, impact, uh, there's gonna be little to uh, to no traffic impact from the change of use, even though it's adding another story. Uh, you, if I wanted, did I understand you right that you were basing your testimony about the traffic use from a book? You know, uh, from estimates or averages in a book between residential and conservative, not from the actual experience at that site?
Correct. It was based on ITE trip generation projections for office and residential uses. It was not a specific traffic count of this.
But right now, there is a specific uh, uh, building there, structure, and there are, there is a specific traffic use, right?
Yes, there is.
And what is that?
There's an existing two-story office. We have just not performed an on-the-ground traffic count to it.
So you don't, so you're coming in, you don't, you're not, you didn't tell us at all, or you didn't even, you didn't even compute, or at least your report doesn't compute at all, whether this um, uh, you know, increase of of the story and this variance you're seeking, uh, your client is seeking, does, would have an increase in traffic use at that site based upon its current use?
If I, if I may just interject, uh, you know, an off-site traffic study is beyond the scope of a site plan application, and the applicant's not responsible for the general traffic that exists on the roadways.
I so, can I, can I respond?
Clear the
Why, well, I I wanna respond what I'm getting at. The current use has a variance already. There was a variance given to it and and it was based upon whatever was the intended current use. And we have an actual use of traffic there, and and my under, my impression is that it's much lower than what would be come the traffic if if this board granted this additional extra variance. And I feel that the testimony of this witness going from a book saying that there would be no traffic impact based upon some some book that's not real life is not adequate for us. We are dealing with real life here, and and they should have done something to tell us in real life, and I'm asking their witness if he can give us, give us and the board, the public and the board real life experiences. What is gonna be the impact of this additional variance that this this um, that this applicant is seeking? And 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 if I'm understanding the testimony, they, it's, it hasn't been done, and we haven't heard that at all. And um, and and I wanna get a yes or no confirmation or the testimony from Mr. Downey to make that clear for everyone.
Sure. So I think what you're getting at is something addressed in my direct testimony, but I'll I'll restate it here just for clarity. Um, we did two things. First, we compared it to the existing use using the IT numbers. Uh, the second component I mentioned is even if we consider the existing use as being completely vacant, this being a brand-new use over vacant land, the trip generation would still be extremely nominal at a peak generation of ten trips in a peak hour. Uh, whereas DOT would consider significant to be a hundred. So it's about a tenth of what we would consider uh, anything to be significant.
Okay, but it might be, it might be um, many multiples more than what is present there.
No, I would not agree with that.
Well, how many, how many, how much more might it be?
I would say it is four peak hour trips less.
Based upon your IT numbers, not from actual experience, is that right? How many trip hours? That, how many trips per hour at different peak hours is it right now?
For this existing use of this size, it would be projected to have.
I I I'm not asking for a projection. We have, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize. Okay. But I, but I'm, let me make my question as clear as possible.
Right ahead. Go right ahead, sir.
I don't get, I'm not asking you for protect, projections or estimates from ITEs. I'm asking is, did you make a study and survey that you can test, tell us right now how much is actually being, uh, what is the actual volume being used right now? It already has a variance.
Yeah, as I believe I already answered, we did not perform a traffic count for the existing use.
Okay, so so we don't know. We don't know whether it would go up or down on the other use. We can just, we can just make our own estimate uh, from our experience that 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 this new use, that the the additional variance they're asking for, seems to the community, it will be likely an an increase and a significant increase, and the community is not going off of ITE estimates, we're going off of.
Sir, you can ask questions, but you can't testify. We're trying to keep it a
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Um, one other.
If I add something real quick? This is Maurice Cox.
Who, I'm sorry, who is this?
This is Maurice Cox, the applicant.
I lost it. Go right ahead.
Yeah, I think I hear what Stan is saying. So Stan is saying what the current use of the building is generating via traffic. So currently, the building is vacant, so there is no traffic there other than the paid parking that's there going in and out. So what he's asking is if we leave it as a vacant building, non-performing, is the traffic gonna change different than when it is performing? Now, if it was performing on a commercial aspect, which is what it's currently as, the traffic count will be much higher than if it's a mixed-use building, and that's exactly what Mr. Downey is trying to say. So yes, now it's a vacant building, dilapidated, and there's nothing there, so it 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 doesn't exist because we're trying to get the process going. Now, if we use it as a full commercial building that the variance currently allows it for, it will be a much higher traffic than what we're doing with a mixed-use building. To clarify.
Thank you.
Just quickly for the benefit of the board as well, uh, the point of the second component I mentioned, you know, throwing out what the existing generates for a moment and looking at the proposed on its own merits. If this was a completely vacant piece of land and proposed this building from scratch, the trip generation is still extremely nominal. And the way you project trip generation for a proposed use, uh, the industry standard is to use these IT rates that I've referenced. They're based on empirical counts throughout the country at these existing uses, uh, operating with the same manner of similar sizes, et cetera. Uh, it's the same standards that New Jersey DOT directs you to use. Um, and based on the proposed building even on its own, it would be little to no traffic impact, let alone considering that there is currently an approval for this existing use that is there.
Uh, well, it it so, so what you just said said was based on uh, was was not, was based upon the existing variance, not not the existing zone use?
It it's based on the existing building. The building is empty. Nobody's It's based on existing building. The building is empty. Nobody's there.
Yeah, so that's, that we know. It's definitely going way up if it gets an additional variance. Okay, let me move to the next question. I'll try to do, which goes back to the questioning about the the parking and the large vehicles that we know get parked right next to it because there is a, we know that there is a.
Are you testifying?
No, I'm trying to say what my question is. I'm trying to get there quickly. That there, that there is a, we, we know that there is a body shop right next door. We know that the big tow trucks come in regularly all through the day. And you're saying that you, you know, the the site, the site and the traffic considerations you made were, did not include any what's the word, any testing or surveying or or study based upon the parking of the large vehicles. Is that correct? In terms of the site and safety of getting out of that, that site?
No, the exercise of the site civil engineer preparing a plan demonstrating the site triangles is the analysis of what the sight lines for that driveway are.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, sir. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Downey on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we do have Sophie Lubin. Please state your name and address for the record. Wait, I'm sorry, they're moving around. There you go, Sophie. You should be good to go. Sophie, can you hear me? Sophie Lubin. I'm not sure where she went. All right, we have Eric Buckley. We can come back to Sophie. Eric Buckley, please state your name and address for the record. You're muted.
Hi, my name is Eric Buckley, Eight Edge Hill Court. My wife actually, she's having some audio issues, so she's going to join in online if that's okay.
Okay, state your name and address again. I'm sorry, so this is Sophie?
Yeah, I'm having technical.
I can't hear.
We can't hear her. I'm sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Uh, almost.
Can you hear me now?
Not really.
Very muffled.
All right, you guys hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you, we can hear. Eric, we can hear.
I'm right next to him. Okay, Sophie Lubin, Eight Edge Hill Court.
Sit where Eric is sitting because his voice is right in front of the microphone. Switch seats.
Okay. How about now?
Excellent.
Okay, so sorry about that.
Did you need your name and address for the record, please?
Sophie Lubin, Eight Edge Hill Court.
Go right ahead. What, any questions?
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Downey. In your report, you used a parking requirement of one space for each 250 square feet of floor area for the first floor. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And where did you get that requirement?
That's within the municipal ordinance.
Are there medical offices being proposed on half of the first floor?
Sorry, what's on my speaking?
Could you hear the question, Mr. Downey?
Yeah, there's a question if there's a medical office on the first floor. I'm not certain the exact breakdown of what would be general versus medical.
Okay, that that's crucial to the question. Based on our understanding, medical offices are being proposed on half of the first floor.
Well, right now, right now, whatever it could be proposed has to fit within the guidelines of the ordinance. Right now, we're looking at the building itself and the parking.
Correct. So my, my question, the reason I'm asking is, in your experience, do medical offices generate a higher peak parking demand than non-medical offices?
In our ordinance, yes.
Okay. Does West Orange have a parking requirement that is specific to medical offices? And if so, what?
Again, ma'am, ma'am, right now, this is a building. There's nobody renting the building. There's, we're looking at the building. Does it fit within the zone plan? So whatever may happen in the future, the owner of the building would have to comply with the ordinances.
Oh, she's asking what are they proposing?
Yeah.
So X square feet of general office, X and Y square feet of medical office? And then do we have different parking requirements, one for 250, one for 150, whatever for the different uses? That's what she's asking.
Right, but it doesn't, I didn't see that on the plan.
Well, he testified to it in the first hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. So my question is, there is what, what is the, what is the parking requirement specific to medical offices? Because this is relevant because we're trying to, we're trying to understand if the parking that is being provided is truly sufficient.
I believe it's one space for every 250 square feet. Is that correct?
Well, I'm looking at the ordinance. It says medical, dental, psychiatric, and chiropractic offices, one for each 150 square feet of gross office area. And then what was? Depends on the public, private business or, oh, no, wait.
Is the architect still here? Can we get the square footage breakdown by medical portion and general office portion? I think I remember seeing something like that.
It's on, it's on the civil, the civil plans, 2,824 square feet of office space.
Yeah, the testimony was half of, yeah, but we, you're right. How much is the square footage? It says first floor tenant space, one office, 1436 square feet. Tenant space, second office, 1388 square feet. It doesn't specify on the plan which office is which.
Okay, so it's roughly 1,400 square feet of medical office space.
Jason Pice, architect, sorry, I'm pulling that up right now.
You'll have to be sworn in before you testify.
Sorry. You have to raise your right hand if you're going to testify. You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Say your name for the record, please.
Jason Pice, architect.
Okay, go right ahead.
So on the tenant side, office space number one is 1436, which was the space that Maurice was going to use for the medical part. There's 1436.
Now, is that medical doctor's office or that medical laboratory?
Maurice can answer that.
No, it's a doctor's office.
You're gonna, you're gonna have to be sworn in, sir, if you're gonna tell, well. Diana, why don't you swear, Mr. Cox?
Please raise your right hand because if we're going to keep going from person to person, Ms. Cox, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Okay, sir.
I've got the ordinance here. Right now, it's medical, dental, psychiatric, chiropractic are one for each 150 square feet. Other offices other than medical, dental, psychiatric, and chiropractic is one per 250 square feet.
If, so can I, can I continue?
Go right ahead.
Okay, so if the ratio, if that ratio of one space for each 150 square feet were used, would the applicant comply with them?
It's six spaces.
Mr. Chairman, she's asking if the, now, instead of taking the total 28,000 or 2,800 and whatever divided by 250, you take 1436 divided by 150, take 1388 divided by 250, you get 10 and 6, that's 16. Then you take the residential, which is 9, 4, and you end up with 29 total.
Right. Mr. Cox, are both the first floor going to be a medical or just one side?
On just one side.
Okay.
Which side?
The 1400.
If you're looking at it, it should be left side.
The 1,436.
Yes.
Six spaces.
No, 1436 divided by 150.
I thought it was.
Medical? Is 150. I, I shouldn't be testifying. I'm sorry.
I'm doing the, I'm gonna do the math, but just, or Mr. Priest, if you could do the math, 1436 square feet for medical office divided by the requirement of 150 square feet for a medical office, you know, every 150 feet equals one parking space. What does that net out to be?
Well, it should be the engineer. They have that on their page, which I'm trying to pull up.
Okay, because I have it. When I do it on my calculator, it comes out to 9.57.
So 10.
Yeah.
So if I may, if that 1436.
Go right ahead.
Yes, thank you. If that 1436 is medical at 150 square feet per space, that's 9.6 spaces. Then the remainder, 1,388 divided by the 250 is 5.6 spaces. So we get I just wrote it down. We get 15, 15 spaces for the lower level. Hold on.
Right, then you have to add back the residential.
And then that would be 15, yes, plus the 13. And the requirement be 29 spaces. Where we have 26 with the two EV spaces.
So does he need a variance or are they good?
No, they would need a two-car variant. They would need two spaces.
Three, three car, it's 29 to 26.
Even with the EV credits, right? They, they come out with, what's the net, what's the full amount that they get? They show, they show 25?
20.
26.
26.
With the EV spaces. So they're short three spaces. They would need a parking variance for three spaces. Let me just see something here. Did you provide notice for a parking variance? We'd take a look at the notice. I don't believe, I don't, I don't know that we had, but I know we certainly included the catch-all variants. Language.
While you're pulling that up, I'm just going to chime in with one quick thing as well. Digging a little bit further into the municipal ordinance. There is a section in the parking file 12.2. Number three mentions, when housing is included in a mixed-use development, a shared parking approach, the provision of parking shall be permitted. That kind of goes to some of what we were speaking to before when I was going through those parking numbers about how offices, medical offices and residential don't actually experience repeat parking demands at the same time. So in consideration of that shared parking approach, you know, if the town professionals are in agreement that that would be appropriate here. You know, I don't know if that means a variance would or would not be required. If shared parking is permitted, then is that a reduction in the requirement? That's a bit of a technicality. I would need to lean on the.
Yeah, it sounds like it's more of a mitigating circumstance.
Yeah, I, I think the shared parking in that ordinance was when you have a business during the day and you have residential at night, that's the way that was shared, not, not at the same time.
That's what they have. Except we don't know the hours of the medical office.
Correct.
Late night hours. That's the.
Yes. Something to consider.
Yeah, that was our, our nine to five.
Okay.
Is that going to be a condition then, nine to five?
All right. That's Mr. Cox that said that, right? Because I got the thing in front of me. I can't see what's. And that's Monday through Friday?
Yes.
Or Saturdays?
Monday through Friday, I believe, is Saturdays is every other week.
And the hours on Saturday for every other week?
It's the same, Monday to nine to five.
Got it.
So the notice included a description of the amount of office space, 280, 2,824 square feet of office space on the first floor, indicating that it was going to be subdivided in a total of seven dwelling units on the second and third floors. And then the notice also said 26 existing on-site parking spaces. So you didn't spell out that variance, but you did do the catch-all phrase, requires any other variances. So it is explained to people in the notice. I think it's probably passes muster in terms of describing the amount of parking spaces. And then in terms of the shared parking, that's in an ordinance? Is that, is that in the? Where is that?
The line I was referring to, if that's what you're referring to, was 25-12.2A3.
Yeah.
Say it again for me. I'm sorry, 12?
Yeah, no problem. 12.2A3.
Okay. I don't know, can our I think it's our code officials has to.
Mr. Hazel, how's it handy?
Yeah, yeah. Do we have an expert who can give me, give us some kind of a when a housing, when housing is included in mixed-use development, a shared parking approach, the provision of the parking shall be permitted. So I don't know whether that removes any variance if there was, if there is one requested.
To me, it would be a mitigating.
Definitely mitigating. I'm just trying to see if, I think the notice covers this because I think it does spell out what parking is there and what the office space is. And that they did include any other variances that may become necessary. So because technically the board can just, you could just say it's, it's office space on the bottom if they didn't know what it was. And if they then got a tenant that was a medical office building and they needed a parking variance, they'd have to come back. They could either come to this board or the zoning board to go get a parking variance, separate and distinct. But right now, they're, they're being, you know, they're telling you what it's going to be. So the calculation can be here, and I think it can be considered by the board at this point. If the other side becomes medical use, though, you're going to have to come back because you're saying it's just going to be straight office use.
Yeah, so the medical use, Maurice Cox again, the medical use is, is ours. So we're not, we're not, you know, changing or expanding on that. If we, we do, we would have to require a new building. We're already in West Orange. We're actually at 105. We're just moving up here for, you know, larger, larger space.
Maybe, but you're not understanding me. If you end up using the entire first floor as medical, medical use, then you're going to be short even more parking spaces and you'd have to come back for a variance.
We're not using it for medical space.
But, but the original calculations for the 2,800 and some odd square feet is based on one for 250. And they say they don't need a variance based on that. But if you take the 1,400, then you end up with 29 being required, 26 supplied with the EV credit, the variance is three. They need to show with shared parking that from nine to five, when the office is there, there's enough parking. And from 5:00 PM to 9:00 AM, there's enough spaces for the residents.
I, I have a question. I am on the Ecode site. Thank you. I'm on the Ecode site and I'm looking at 25-12.2, minimum number of required parking spaces. And item one there says, the number of off-street parking spaces required for any non-residential use shall be determined by reference to Parking Schedule 2 below, except for uses in the B1 and B2 zones in the central business district, which are regulated by 25-12.2B5. Is this in central business, is this B1 in the central business district?
It is, it is B1. It is, it is B-one.
So if I can, my scrolling is really slow on this E-code, but if I scroll down there, it says, the following standard shall only apply to permitted non-residential uses in the portions of the B-one and B-two zones in the central business district, uh, A, restaurant or bar, B, all other permitted non-residential uses, no off-street parking spaces are required for the first thousand square feet of gross floor of an individual use. One space will be provided per three hundred square feet of gross floor area above the first thousand square feet.
Well, yeah.
If that says permitted, and this may be conditional, so I, I don't know if that applies either.
Hey, Mister Hazel, you wanna weigh in on this?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, uh, in, in this instance, I think that the, they're talking about a permitted use, so that the residential use is permitted here as, it's a conditional use because it's a mixed use, but the residential use would be permitted, so that, in my opinion, would be uh, would, would apply here as a permitted use, so that this, this uh, provision five B would, would apply.
So, so then the calculation is?
So that you would, the, the, basically the calculation would be uh, uh, fourteen thirty-six square feet would be, you'd be calculating the one fifty under four thirty-six, taking away the first thousand square feet.
Okay, so then they're back to not needing a variance for parking, okay.
So instead of based on twenty-eight hundred and something, it's eighteen hundred and something? And depending on which thousand you take, you don't take a thousand from the office and a thousand from the medical office, do you?
No, because they're talking about from the uh, this is for the non-residential use.
Like I'm saying, because he divided it into two uses, medical office and office, does he get to take a thousand away from each? Or just a thousand away from one of them?
But says, one office space shall be provided per three hundred square foot of gross floor area above the one thousand square feet. So then you're dividing it by three hundred square feet. So it's even, they have even more parking available.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mister-
Even if you did a thousand at two fifty, he's getting rid of four, and that's the variance three, so he's good, yeah, I got you.
Yeah, so I don't, so I think that we're back to, we, you know, under a straight calculation without, yeah, they, I, they satisfy it then. Yeah, parking is never-
And i- if it is an issue, uh, we would agree to, to have a condition of approval that we work this out with the uh, the township engineer in terms of getting the uh, calculation hammered down.
One, one thing that I might add again, because the, the, the issue, as you see, we're discussing now, having the, the, one of the office being used as a medical office, I think that that should be reflected in the uh, any condition of approval as well, that the uh-
No more than half?
No more than, whether it's unit one or so, or two, that they, I think it's unit one that they're saying will be the office, that it's limited to that unit with this approval, because that will, of course, change the parking requirement.
Okay, so medical office use is limited to the unit one on first floor.
And you may wanna just throw the, the square footage in there, because walls can be moved.
Yep.
Yeah.
So then, in this case, do we wanna have a reserved parking space for each of the seven apartments, so that way, of the twenty-four physical spaces, seven are reserved for the residents, and the other seventeen are the shared spaces. So when the medical people come in and the office people come in, hopefully the residents have left, and there's seventeen spaces for them, which is less than what they need, even if you do one for one fifty and one for two fifty is sixteen. And then, as those people leave-
You're gonna have to reserve some of the spaces for the medical.
Well, that, see, that's, I don't know, which one do you reserve for them? I'm, I'm thinking that the residents would leave for the day, but when they come home at lunchtime and they want a parking spot, they need to have their spot back. So do they take up their reserved spot, or they take up an up-for-grab spot, and leave the seven that are reserved open? I, I don't know how they're gonna manage-
I think the applicant's gonna have to come up with a plan.
Yeah.
That's kinda, we'll condition this with the applicant coming up with a plan.
Yeah, a plan that would assign parking spaces somehow, okay.
Shared parking spaces for the medical space, and then the medical use and the residence, one, one space for each residential unit, and ten spaces for the medical space in a, in some type of shared parking uh, mm, solution.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
So that's gonna be worked out with, with Mister Scott? And Mister Hazel?
Correct.
And they'll submit it as a condition, the, their plans.
Okay, do any other members of the public have any questions?
Mister-
I'm sorry.
I, I still have a couple, am I still?
I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Okay, um, well, so, I guess, following that conversation that the um, that the, the medical offices are open on Saturdays, would a variance still be required, um, given that most people don't work on Saturdays, the residents would be home, um, also, is there consideration for uh, residents that work from home, full-time?
Testify, we, we've been bumping around to different people, who is that question we asked of?
Mister Downey.
Mister Downey, yes.
Yes, uh, so I think, to answer the second part of your question on the parking, um, whether there's consideration for um, employees who work from home, yes, I mean, based on, I believe the calculation that we've just landed on, um, not only we're compliant, I think we're actually overparked compared to what is required, uh, and that's assuming the two uses are stacked on top of each other and parking demand, so, even if all those residents never left, hypothetically, there would be more than sufficient parking. Um, as far as whether the operational Saturday triggers any variances, um, none that I'm aware of, but I would, I would defer to the others uh, as part of the product team to actually confirm if that triggers uh, variance.
Okay, thank you, um. Is Main Street a county road? Switching gears a little bit?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay, are you familiar with the site plan review resolution of Essex County?
Yes.
And does that regulation discourage vehicles maneuvering out of parking spaces within twenty feet of the right of way?
I'm not certain of that specific requirement, um, that is, you know, a type of requirement that's in a lot of standards, so I, I wouldn't be surprised, but I cannot say for certain.
Okay, our understand, my, my understanding is that it is, um, and would you consider that a public safety standard, if it were uh, included?
Um, I'm not sure if I would call it a safety standard, uh, it's usually based on just kind of an, an operational perspective, making sure the vehicles can maneuver, um, you know, I, I can't say for certain how that requirement's worded in there, but I believe there's uh, twenty feet generally provided to the edge of the actual traveled way, if not the curb line, due to the presence of the fairly wide shoulder along the frontage. So I think, if that requirement is not explicitly meant, I would say the spirit of that requirement might be met.
How would the spirit of the requirement be met, if it's not explicitly met?
The, again, going off the assumption that the requirement is, what you said it is, that twenty feet from the road to the parking spaces, um, now roads have the benefit of having shoulders, so I think the twenty-foot separation that's aiming for between public traffic and parking maneuvers is provided, uh, not entirely behind the curb line, but from the onsite parking to the shoulder, which is where the travel edge stops.
And uh, just to be clear, if, if this is a um, a county requirement, this would be subject to planning, uh, county planning board review as well and approval.
Yes, correct.
Uh, I'm sorry, can you, can you further explain that?
So, uh, one of the conditions of approval, if it, a, a box of county road, is that, that the application goes to the county planning board, and they have to review and approve the application as well.
Is that in the process of, of happening, or that would happen after this, uh, this procedure?
That, that occurs after the, after the um, the application is approved.
Okay. So what, what happens if, what happens if this regulation is not being met? And how many spaces would need to be eliminated to meet that requirement?
And I, I'll, I'll chime in, if they don't get approval from the county planning board, that's a condition of this um, approval here, they'd have to come back to the board on notice to everybody within the two hundred foot, same notices that would be given, to see whether the application can be revised, um, to make it acceptable. And then it would go back to the county planning board to get approval, because it's on a county road.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
You have any other questions?
Not for right now, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mister Downey and his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
We did have one hand up, but they went away last call. Anyone else need to ask a question now? Oh, we do have somebody, oh, no, there we go. Donna R., please state your name and address for the record.
Donna, you were, fourteen Edge Hill Road?
Great, thank you.
So I have a, uh, some of my concerns that people have been talking about, is, is this a, a two, how wide is the entrance and exit to the property, room for two cars or just one car?
The aisle that goes through the site and all the way to the driveway is thirty feet, you know, the narrowest, it gets wider from there, so more than enough for two vehicles, you know, one in each direction.
Cuz I was concerned if someone's going, say, towards CVS, and, and they have to make a left into, if, into the property, if someone's trying to get out, and then they, or, you know, argue who's going first, holding up traffic-
He testified this room, next question, please.
I'm sorry?
He testified this room, next question, please.
I'm all just concerned on the uh, assumptions that people are making, that everyone's leaving for work, I don't know where that assumption comes from, I know so many people who work from home now, I know Ms. Lubin mentioned that, but I don't, I, you don't, you have no idea how, who, who's, who would occupy those apartments, whether it's seniors who are home all day, single moms, families with kids.
Ma'am, ask a, ask a question, please, of him.
What are the assumptions made of, the, where, where do they come from, that you assume people are gonna leave for work?
So I guess there's two questions there, first is, the parking requirements come from two places, the residential component comes from the state standard, which is the residential site improvement standards, and the uh, retail office component, uh, sorry, office component comes from the municipal ordinance, uh, as far as the going to work, what we were discussing, there was an idea of shared parking, which is that when you have mixed uses, a single parking space might serve different uses at different times of the day. However, uh, based on where I believe we've landed on what the parking calculation truly is, as far as what's required for the office, um, there's actually-
You're breaking up and I can't understand you.
Sure, so based on where we've landed with the parking calculation, there's actually more spaces provided than what will be required for uh, the residential and office to both have their peak parking at the same time, hypothetically. So even if no one left for work, there is still sufficient parking. We were just discussing that there is a possibility, if someone does, that a single parking space might uh, service more than one use over the course of the day, but it is not necessary for this particular site to function.
All right, how many cars are allowed per apartment? Just one?
I'm not aware of any restriction, if there is, uh, I know our applicant-
If there are two drivers and two cars in, in each apartment, does somebody else have to find a, a place to park? If you live there?
Yeah, tw- twofold question, if there's a restriction, I'm not aware of any restriction on the number of parking spaces or how that's managed specifically, uh, at an operational level.
Yeah, Maurice Cox here, if, yeah, when we rent the apartment, we, we specifically state one parking per unit.
So stated, okay, thank you.
It's stated.
Right, thank you.
It's also usually in the uh, rental's agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions from Mister Downey and his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
We have either Mister or Mrs. Buckley back again.
Okay.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Hi, yes, all right, this is Eric Buckley, this time eight Edge Hill Court.
Go right ahead, sir.
Um, yeah, so I'm looking at the, the civil drawings, and it states that one point eight spaces per unit are required for a one-bedroom efficiency apartment, and then a two-bedroom, uh, the required spaces is two spaces, but I keep hearing the mention of one spot per unit, so I'm a little confused, so, uh, could someone just clarify, please?
So the requirement is the one point eight for the one bedrooms and two, for the two bedrooms, but at an operational level, as was just uh, testified to by the applicant, there is actually gonna be a requirement that each base, um, you know, only gets one space. So the actual demand would be presumably less, but we are required uh, to provide one point eight or two per unit.
Okay, and uh, my second question is, I see that only one handicap spot is uh, shown, and that's required, I would assume, for the office spaces, but are you accounting for the residential portions? What if someone is handicapped? That seems a little discriminatory.
There is one ADA space required for a lot of this number of spaces.
Okay, so what happens when during the day, someone takes that spot, because they're going to a medical facility?
Uh, in that scenario, they would need to use a different parking space, again, we've met the requirement.
So you're not accounting for any handicap, uh, residents, is what you're saying?
Not you. It is accounted for, and the requirement that is satisfied.
Don't you have to treat these as two separate buildings in a way?
No.
Okay. Um, I'd still state that, you know, I, I think it's a little discriminatory if someone, that you're kinda saying someone with a handicap would not be able to occupy the, the space as a resident.
Okay, so do you have another question?
Uh, I would just, like clarification, if that's intent, you know, I understand there's these regulations, but it doesn't seem to meet the intent of, you know, ADA.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there's a question, but it explicitly-
The que- yeah, the question, the question is, are there any, um, any, any, is there anything besides just that one parking spot, I, I feel like the answer is no, and um, what, what happens if someone with a handicap would like to rent a space? Uh, rent a, re- rents a unit within the, the residential portion, are you just gonna say, oh, sorry, we don't have any handicap spots available? So you can't? I guess it's more of a question for the applicant, whoever is dealing with the uh, rental portion.
Right, that's, that's really an operational uh, issue for Mister Cox to address when he, if and when the situation arises. Uh, we, there's no intent to discriminate whatsoever, the parking counts and the provision of the one handicapped space is compliant with what is required.
Okay, um, I guess it's gonna be more of a question for the architect then, I don't, I don't know who the question's for, but um, there's no, there's no, um, there's nothing there for, anything for a handicap person to, to live there as well.
The, 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 the rules are set by ordinance and law, so they, they do fulfill the requirements, if another handicap person uh, decides to move in there, the management company would then probably look to segregate another space. So it, it's, it's a function of what the rules are.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions from Mister Downey and his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any.
Okay, we'll conclude, thank you, Mister Downey.
Uh, we have our last witness, uh, this is um, John McDonough, he's a licensed, uh-
What I'm gonna do is nine oh one, let's take a five-minute break.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Nice bio break, five minutes, please. Okay, everybody, let's get back on the record, please. Okay. Megan, let's get back on the record.
We are chairman.
Thank you. Mrs. Everell, you're up.
You're muted.
You're muted, sir.
Sorry about that. Um, I don't see that Ms. Scarpa is back.
Oh, my.
Looking, looking, looking.
I'll try to reach out.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, well, let's hear.
I was unable to reach her. I guess she's heading back. Up, here she is.
Here she is. Okay, Ms. Scar. Okay. Counselperson Scarp is here. We're ready to roll.
Okay, very good. Uh, our last witness is uh John McDonough.
Mr. McDonough, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I can't hear you.
Louder, sir. You you're muted. There you go.
I think your volume is on low.
Little, and I'll raise it a little bit.
Gonna go out and come back.
No, you're you're good.
There I am. Yep, I see the little green box. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
I don't know what happened, but that's what happens when you go from Zoom to Teams.
Raise your right hand.
I already did this, but do you swear? Do you swear affirm, tell truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Outstanding.
All right, uh, Mr. McDonough, can you walk us through a little bit of your background?
Sure, I am a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey. That license is current and it's in good standing. I am also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is our national certification. Basically allows us to testify in any state in the union. Uh, that's also current and in good standing. And I am also a licensed landscape architect here in the state of New Jersey, also current and in good standing.
Excellent, correct. Go ahead, Mrs. Everell.
Okay, uh, Mr. McDonough, can you uh walk us through this application from a planning perspective?
Sure, and uh, Mr. Chairman, I think I'm going to enter those exhibits which I saw on the website. Um, these are photographs that I had provided, I believe, at the time of the last hearing, so they may well have been on uh the website all this time. I don't know if it's been identified yet for the record, Tyler, um, or if we need to have them marked.
They're on the agenda?
Yes, yeah.
So that would be under, under which one? Uh.
Planning exhibits for one seventy-two, one seventy-four Main Street.
Okay, so I'm I'm seeing that's labeled. Planning exhibit, okay. All right, so you know, we don't have to mark that because you're already on it, but if you're going to, if there's more than one photograph, um, just, I see there's numbers on them, I think.
Yes, there it's.
And refer to in the page number when when you speak.
Okay, so just gonna get, let the physical site do a little bit of the talking for itself here. Um, it's a single tax lot, as we all know. It's block eighty-nine, lot number six. It's about fifteen thousand one hundred and seventy-six square feet. And this first photograph that you see is what I saw about a month ago, actually two months ago, when we were here in in February on a cold day, I walked the area. And you've got the two-story building that exists now and the parking in the front. That basic development pattern is not changing. The applicant is going to keep the parking in the front, keep the building pad where it is and obviously, the application before the board is to add a level to go up to a third story, um, which is what's triggering the relief in terms of the number of stories, but is not triggering any relief in terms of the overall height of the structure below that that thirty-five foot mark. And we'll come back to this, but we do see that there's some framing behind the building as well, taller trees, taller structures, uh, which does provide some, again, framing, some mitigation um of this building on the adjacent residential uses. There's also a mitigative measure in terms of the land form. This is a site that fronts on Main Street, which is lower than the Llewellyn Park neighborhood behind the site. The grade rises up from this vantage point up. Um, so we do have some mitigative measures, not only in terms of the vegetation and the trees, but also in terms of the terrain and the the topography. And of course, uh, compliments to the community, to the board, um, to your leadership and professionals on the positive transformation that's happening here in the community. Uh, with good planning, we are supposed to look at things holistically. Um, obviously, the change here will have impact on the residential uses, but it's also going to have um, a change on Main Street and in fact, a very positive change, consistent with what has happened in the rest of the corridor corridor in terms of the repurposing of the Edison Lofts, which is a multi-story building much higher than the subject. And of course, as we work our way further, panning more to the south on Main Street, um, you can see three-story buildings. We have an applicant proposing a three-story building, opposite three-story buildings. So you've got a nice framing effect, if you will, of the corridor on Main Street. And this fourth page now takes you up into the air, gives you a little bit of a of a context. If you were to go back to an aerial photograph in nineteen seventy-nine, this is what you see, this basic form of development with the building in the back uh and the parking in the front. Um, this applicant is not creating that development pattern that's there. It's been a part of your local landscape for somewhat forty-six years now. Um, it is a building that has been there for a long time. Um, it is showing some age and the applicant is here ready, willing, and able to invest in a site that could use some help um, along your Main Street, which your master plan has numerous references over and over and over again about revitalizing Main Street and bringing life to Main Street and and creating a fresh new look. So we think this application is right on point with that goal. The other point that I'd like to make with respect to this particular photograph is that a building can be a buffer. We often associate trees with a buffer, but a building can be a buffer as well, and that's what that building achieves here. The active land use is the parking lot, which is separated from the residential use by the building, by the mass that's there now. The building takes on more of a passive approach in terms of generation of noise, generation of lights, generation of odors. This is a zone that can allow multiple uses here, um, including bars, including restaurants, um, including office buildings. Um, this site could be completely redeveloped with the building closer to the street and the service court taken to the back where we'd have the trash, where we'd have the loading, the banging and the clanging that would go with that. So again, we see this form of development as it exists now and working with the land as it is now is a better zoning alternative, better integration with the neighborhood than what could be under a zone conforming plan. Um, again, a bar could go here, a thirty-five foot high business school or vocational school could go here. All the flavors of retail could go here, uh, restaurant, and then, of course, as a conditional use, this could be repurposed as a micro brewery. Fast food restaurants are permitted in this zone and private clubs are permitted in this zone as well. So again, you consider all of the activities uh that are associated with a parking lot, uh, not the least of which is the beep beep of the cars locking and closing the lights and all of those active impacts that could be associated with that adjacent land use. This is a view, frame number five, looking more towards the south down Main Street, and we did this to give you a sense of the way the terrain drops down. Again, looking at the building being the buffer from the active land use and the separation from the activity on Main Street. Uh, this, of course, being a commercial corridor. The positive transformation that you see, the sheer mass of the building that is across the street. Um, and again, how we're creating a building that is certainly not going to be dwarfed by that which is around it on on Main Street. This is a view, frame number six, which takes us now back to those residential properties and looks at the subject, which is this um, parking lot that you see in the center of the photograph. The building is in the middle as well. Um, I spoke about some vegetation that's in place now on the neighboring properties, admittedly. Um, as I said, this was taken on a cold February day in the dead of winter when the leaves are all down. So this is perhaps a worst case scenario. Trees do not fall down in the winter. The leaves do, but they do provide an obscuring element. They may not completely uh, screen or camouflage, but they do provide some obscuring of views. Um, and that, I think, is a a planning benefit. And of course, when the leaves come back, we do get some full screening effect as well. Frame number seven is an even broader view, looking to the east to our skyline, which in no way uh is this building going to block views of the skyline uh, from the lower level. This is taken from eighty feet, a hundred feet up in the air. Um, obviously, there are no buildings on the Llewellyn side that are have windows up this high. So certainly no blocking of scenic views of the beautiful skyline or uh any of the landforms that you see uh, beyond the subject site. We have larger buildings right across the street as well, uh, which, to the extent we're talking about scenic views, uh, they would be blocking those views as well. So the building is not rising up any higher than those buildings that are immediately across the street. And then finally, lastly, frame number eight is sort of a a top-down. Again, this form is what I saw back in nineteen seventy-nine. It hasn't changed with the parking in the front and the building setback in the back. It does offer some planning benefits in terms of integration of this site with its surroundings. You can see that there are some evergreens um on the neighboring properties, which do provide a screening element. Uh, there are perhaps some opportunities on that adjacent land as well, if the neighbors so choose to screen from any use of this commercially zoned land. All of that said, um, we're looking again at a site that is surrounded by Main Street, which is transforming with new development. We've got detached dwellings around as well, and we're trying to maintain sensitivity as well and looking at the the project as a whole. The proposal here, um, as we said at the outset, is to construct a third-story addition. Uh, we're going to renovate this building. I think that's an important component of the application and convert to mixed use, which is something the master plan also makes numerous references to as well. Relatively boutique scale development here. We're talking about seven dwelling units on two floors over commercial space, uh, which, given the colloquy earlier, any combination of the use of this commercial space would not trigger a variance, a parking variance. To the extent it does, this applicant comes back to the board. You heard about the exemption clause for, for retail. If a medical use went in here and it combined with a retail, if the applicant did the calculations, you would see there would not be a parking variance here, given that exception. If there were some combination of uses that did trigger a parking variance, that would get flagged by your, your zoning officer and, and come back here in front of the board. So in terms of the relief that the applicant is asking the board to move on, your planner, Mr. Hazel, as always, has given the board a list of the relief that the applicant is seeking. It's relatively short and a very thorough, comprehensive review that gives the board things to think about with respect to this application. In terms of the zone that we're in, we are in the B1 Retail Business District, which, as we know, was rezoned. This area was rezoned to B1 in twenty twenty in the interest of revitalizing your downtown and Main Street with new uses. There are many references in the twenty nineteen master plan about Main Street as a precursor to that ordinance that I just spoke about. And bearing in mind, it was previously an office zone. Now, again, as B1, it is an office and retail zone and residential, in that it allows mixed use as well. In terms of the zone conformance, all of the heavier zoning controls are met here. The project fully conforms with the use requirements of the zone. You have a good list of mixed use conditions under, you're, under the conditional use provision of your ordinance, under twenty-five dash twenty-four point two, and the applicant complies with every single one of them. The project also substantially complies with all of your bulk requirements. The height complies, parking complies. There's no density relief being sought here for the seven-unit development. In terms of the relief, again, turning back to Mr. Hazel's report, it's threefold here. Number one is the number of stories. Two-point-five would be allowed here. If we had a half-story on top, we would not need this relief. We're looking for three stories. But the overall height is going to be less than thirty-five feet. And bearing in mind, we've got three stories directly across the street in direct orientation with, with the subject site, not to mention the, the five-story building as well. So there's good neighborhood harmony in that regard. The rear setback is existing, six-point-five-four. The ordinance is looking for a minimum of thirty feet. This is not a new build per se, but we're working with the land and the structures that are lawfully existing thereon. I believe that's a legitimate hardship based on the existing condition. There's some case law on that point, known as the HAWRYO case, H-A-W-R-Y-L-O. And I'm going to come back to that shortly. And then along the same lines, we look at lock coverage, where eighty-four point two percent is what is there, what has been there and what the applicant is looking to continue, not worsen. Where seventy-five percent is the maximum that's allowed. That's the same as what I just said for the setback. It's a hardship related to the land and the structures that are lawfully existing thereon. So now, in terms of the legal justification, as I said, there's a basis under hardship, but primarily, I'm going to focus on what we call the C-two balancing test, whereby the benefits of the application as a whole would substantially outweigh the detriments. And again, we look at the application holistically, the impact on Main Street, the impact on the neighborhood, the impact on the community at large. First, we look at the project benefits. The project as a whole will promote multiple purposes of the land use law at NJSA forty-colon fifty-five D-dash-two, including Purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare, which is advanced with renovation, repurposing, and revitalization of this longstanding building, this locally familiar building in the downtown that will add new housing for people to live in, new businesses for people to work and shop and provide business offerings to the public. Purpose G, the promotion for a variety of uses in appropriate locations because the site is in a civic center. And it is good planning to concentrate people in downtown settings with easy access to civic and public amenities. Your walk score here is very good. Seventy-eight out of a hundred, that's considered a very walkable area where most errands can be accomplished on foot. That is good for the public in terms of its efficiency. This walk score has been recognized by authorities such as the National Institute of Health as a reliable and valuable source for considering the walkability of the, of an area. That's why I think it's a good thing to put people here where we have lessened reliance on the automobile. Additionally, Purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment. I think those architectural plans that you saw last hearing speak for themselves. This is going to give a site that's been here almost five decades now, a fresh new look, bring it more into harmony with the transformation of the area. Accolades to the community and to your downtown alliance for the great transformation that's taking place on Main Street. And this is going to be a nice continuum in, in that regard. Lastly, Purpose M, which is our planning goal, to take what's there, repurpose and reuse it. That's called efficient use of land. The applicant is working with that which is there. That certainly has much less impact on a neighborhood than a complete demolition here, a complete rebuild. Again, this is putting a cap on the building that's there and essentially keeping the rest in place. That's as efficient as it gets from a planning standpoint. We call it adaptive reuse, renovation and conversion of what's there. Taking all of those public benefits, we now consider the potential impacts associated with the relief seeking. Based on all of the testimony from witnesses before me, licensed professionals and our operators sworn under oath, none of the relief based on the record will cause impacts of a substantially adverse nature. The upgrades to the building will actually improve its relationship to Main Street and to those homes around it. Visually, this is certainly going to have a much better, more attractive facade than that which exists. The added story does not equate to height relief or parking relief. Visually and functionally, the degree of departure from that which is contemplated in the zone plan is not substantial. As I said, the site is sunk relative to the homes up behind it. That lessens the impact, and we talked about trees and terrain mitigating potentially adverse impacts. Obviously, any development has impact. What the board needs to consider is the weight, extreme weight of those positives and what I believe is very little weight in terms of the negatives on the adjacent properties. Yes, there'll be impact, but will it be substantial is the question. The setback is an existing condition. Going up will not impede the privacy, the use or enjoyment, or have a greater effect on the surrounding neighborhood than a permitted use could have, if, even if it were set further back from those homes. There's a mitigative measure in terms of terrain and trees. There's going to be an improved facade. There will be no negative shadow effects here or blocking of scenic views and certainly not generating a population density that will exceed the carrying capacity of the land. Indicators of carrying capacity, parking demand, water demand, sewer demand, waste generation are all within the carrying capacity of the land, given the relatively modest population density here. The coverage, again, it's in a longstanding existing condition. It's not worsening. And based on those aerial photos, the coverage has been this way since nineteen seventy-nine and can continue this way for perpetuity. So it's been there for forty-six years and can continue this way forever. In conclusion, the application is simply to expand vertically what's there now. It's not going outward, it's going upward. No height relief is required, no use relief is required, no density relief is required, no parking relief is required. In essence, this is going to give this building a nice facelift. It's a longstanding building on Main Street. It'll give it a fresh new look that will complement the positive change with, I believe, good sensitivity to the area. That said, I believe the statutory tests for all the relief are met and approval is warranted here. Before I close, I did want to put a couple of snippets before the board to consider with respect to that HAWRYO case that I spoke about, which I think is on point with the case before you. I'm going to give you a couple of quotes from this land use treatise by Mr. Cox, which we planners turn to. It's a nine-hundred-page treatise. The courts have recognized it as an authority on land use. And let's see what that says in the twenty twenty-five edition on page four-twenty-seven. It reads subsection C under C1 speaks of an extraordinary and exceptional situation uniquely affecting a specific piece of property or the structures lawfully existing thereon. This language recognizes that hardship can be created not only by the physical characteristics of the land, but by the existence or by the reason of the existence of a structure already located on it, which may create an exceptional situation sufficient to justify a zoning variance. And I can, I can give the board the site if, if it needs it, but I'll skip that in the interest of time. On page forty-eight of the same book, in HAWRYO, a C variance was granted to rebuild the upper portion of a barn which was closer to the road than the current regulation allowed. In upholding the variance, the appellate division found that the foundation was a unique feature of the land, causing practical difficulty in that denial of the variance would result in the foundation and a well being wasted. We could talk about similar ways here of taking down a building with good bones that's already there and certainly able to accommodate that addition. Page four-twenty-nine, in Harleyo, the barn had been built before there was a zoning ordinance, and so was a prior non-conforming structure. A neighbor objecting to the grant of the variance argued that the phrase "lawfully existing" was meant to preclude a non-conforming structure. The appellate court disagreed, relying on a Davis case where the Justice, Justice Stein in this case said, "The existence of a non-conforming structure may justify a variance from a maximum land coverage requirement." We have that here. The court found that the barn had been a non, the fact that the barn had been a non-conforming use did not make the remaining structure unlawful. Also justifiable under this provision would be variances to permit extensions to an existing building which is non-conforming by way of example as to side yard requirements. Continuing the existing line of the building so that no further side yard accroachment would occur and the proposed addition could not be reasonably located so as to conform to the ordinance because of the arrangement of the building. So I just give that to the board to give some deference to in terms of what the case law says about a similar case. The last thing I'll leave you with are a couple of snippets from your own master plan, how this advances your master plan. Two thousand and nineteen, West Orange Master Plan on page thirty recommended the rezoning from the OB to the B1 zone here on the merit of consistent with existing land uses and desired future land uses. This is mixed use, which on page thirty also says, "Review and modify standards for mixed use development, particularly in the downtown setting." Page thirty-six talks about a focus area. Your, page thirty, you talk about focus areas and talk about downtown Main Street as a focus area. Page thirty-six says, "Support existing businesses and residential uses. Promote additional residential uses in the downtown." That's what the applicant is doing. Economic Development on page forty-one talks about the corridor, the downtown West Orange Alliance focusing on building improvements. The applicant is doing that. Page forty-two, recommendations for a balance of land uses. The application is doing that. Appropriate housing types, sizes, supporting local businesses with a resident population. And then finally, I think I heard this at the outset. In terms of general housing obligations, West Orange remains committed to addressing its fair share of regional affordable housing obligations as well as providing a range of housing opportunities. The, the extent affordable housing is required here, applicant is not asking any relief in that regard as well. So the, the applicant will comply with, with your ordinances. All said, I think this is a good application. Sorry to leave that hovering on the screen. And with that said, I think this application merits the board's approval.
Mr. McDonough, before we conclude, you are a licensed landscape architect.
Yes, I, yes, said that at the outset.
Okay, so a part of this application, we are requesting a waiver for the landscape plan. Can you explain to the board why no landscaping is, additional landscaping is provided?
Very quickly, just to take you back to that aerial of what you see. What you see is what you have, the site is there, it's a built-out site. The dimensional requirements would preclude adding additional landscaping, certainly in the front of the site. There are constraints in the back of the site. Again, given that this is a, a built site and you have limited capacity for, for vegetation. And there is good supplemental vegetation on the adjacent properties, which I think meet the, meet the planning intent.
And nothing further.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Garino, do you have any questions from Mr. McDonough's testimony?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Mr. McDonough, thank you very much for your detailed presentation. Much appreciated. I have a question.
Yes.
And depending on how you answer this question, there may be another question. Have you ever done a project in another community in the same area like this project is now? That's what I'm saying. Have you done a project in the same presentation analysis of a project like it's being proposed here on Main Street in another community with the same type of, you know, environmental impact that, you know, is in West Orange?
If, if the, if the question is, have I seen additions to an existing building? Is that, is that the question?
I would like, the thing is, I'm trying to, the component, what's being done, the additions, the renovations, the whole, you know, the change of use. What I'm trying to get from your expertise, have you done a project like this? And if it's yes, I'll have another question. If it's no, then I'm done, sir.
The answer is, I see a lot of different land use applications. Retrofit of an existing building base with a, a tower or another element on top of it is not unusual and not something I've, I've seen. I don't, not something I have not seen, I should say. So I don't know if that's too open-ended. But yes, we, we do see vertical extensions, even from smaller homes, a ranch to a two-story. We do see it, yes.
Okay, so my next question, sir, is very bad. So if you've done projects like this, have you gone back after the project was done? And did you see any negatives or positives based upon your presentation?
Well, I always like to go back and, as I'm driving around, look and see how things came out. But I, I, in terms of going in somebody's backyard or seeing what the impact would be, I don't, I don't do that.
No. Okay. So, all right, there, there. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. McDonough, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions from Mr. McDonough's testimony?
Thank you, Chairman. So, Mr. McDonough, thank you so much for your excellent report on adaptive reuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Using that picture, though, I have an observation that I believe the applicant said that the building was vacant and it looked like the whole parking lot has been rented out to commercial vehicles. So moving forward with residential and a new use, medical use, can you explain? I'm sorry you didn't testify to this, but is there an explanation on the commercial vehicles in the parking lot?
The honest answer, Mayor, is I, I don't know. I don't know if they were there for a day. I, I just don't know. If they were there when I was there, I can testify to that for sure.
Okay. Leave that as an unanswered question for someone to pick up.
Maurice Cox here, I could answer that.
Thank you.
I think I mentioned that earlier. That's, that's paid parking, so people pay to park there currently.
I know, and I appreciate that.
Yes, no problem. So it's vacant, so people pay to park there. So we are having, we are having traffic there. The building itself is empty, but we're having a lot of traffic coming from the paid parking.
Okay, so moving forward with this application, then all of those agreements that you have.
Yes.
Okay.
Those are currently month-to-month, and that, that was mentioned to them as well. You know, this is until the project goes, goes live.
Great, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
No further questions?
Thank you. Councilperson Scarp, do you have any questions from Mr. McDonough? Councilperson Scarp, do you have any questions for Mr. McDonough? You're muted.
No. No, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Albert, do you have any questions for Mr. McDonough's testimony?
I do not, that was very thorough, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Klein, do you have any questions from Mr. McDonough's testimony?
No questions for Mr. McDonough.
Mr. Cardoza, do you have any questions from Mr. McDonough's testimony? Mr. Cardoza, do you have any questions for Mr. McDonough's testimony?
No questions. Thank you.
Ms. Capr, do you have any questions for Mr. McDonough's testimony?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDonough, will the fence in the front be renovated, upgraded? And the fence in the back and the debris in the back of the building be renovated, upgraded, cleaned up?
I, I will yield to the testimony on the, on the record, Mr. Chair. And I'm sure the applicant would stipulate to work with your professionals in that regard if it hasn't already been officially, officially denoted on the plan.
Yes, we, we noted it in the last meeting that the debris and everything will be cleaned up. The site will be brand new. I know the retaining wall. I don't remember who asked, but for it to be changed from wood to, to cement to look a lot better. The fences in the front will be gone. There will be small little planterie right there with the, with the sign that we demonstrated as well. The fence in the back, the wood fence, that's actually not ours. That's the, the neighbor behind us. But all the debris and everything around there will be removed.
Will, will there be any exterior lights on the back of the building?
No exterior lights on the back of the building, no. It's not necessary.
Will there be a white, a white roof or a, yes?
There's already been a condition about that.
Okay, I'm just going over it again. I'm old. I forget things.
Yeah, that's pretty standard for, for, for heat these days.
Okay. Will the, where will the HVAC be?
We spoke about moving them up front just to, you know, eliminate a lot of noise.
And there will be an ADA compliant ramp or access to the building?
Yes, there'll be a mobile elevator. So that usually goes through the, the state, the county on that. So pretty standard and what's been used in a lot of buildings in West Orange.
Okay, fantastic. Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions for Mr. McDonough's testimony?
No, I believe Mr. McDonough's testimony is as thorough as I always expect it to be. And so I have no additional questions at this point.
Thank you very much. Mr. Scott, do you have any questions for Mr. McDonough's testimony?
No questions for Mr. McDonough. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. McDonough's testimony?
Yes, we have Jonathan Barton. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Barton. I live at Ten Edge Hill Court. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak at this meeting. Mr. McDonough, are you familiar with the provisions of the B one zone in West Orange? It sounded like you were.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Barton.
Okay, so the size of the property, I believe you said was fifteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-six square feet?
Yes.
Right. So if this was a vacant property, what would be the maximum number of dwelling units permitted? Given the, the, the B one zone provisions?
Ah, I'm, I'm gonna stop right there because that's not what we're talking about. There is not a vacant property. We have to go with the property now. So we're not looking, we're not looking for hypothetical. We're looking for this property. So you can ask a question about this property, please.
All right. So it's fifteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-six square feet. So given that, just as it is now, what are the, the maximum amount of dwelling units permitted with that square footage?
Are you asking about for a stand, for a standalone residential use here?
I'm just speaking, broadly speaking, for the provisions of the B one zone in West Orange. My understanding, I'm looking at the, I'm, I'm looking at the land use regulations, twenty-five attachment three subsection twenty-five dash seven point one, West Orange land use regulations. This covers RT, B one. And I'm looking at it right now. And this is B one, which is the same as RT. And RT states, one family minimum lot area per unit. One family, five thousand. Two family, three thousand, seven hundred and fifty each. So I'm just doing the math based on this. And you correct me if I'm wrong. This is my question to you. Based on that, those calculations for fifteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-six square feet, the maximum allowable units would be four.
I, I think this section, Mr. Barton, that you're reading from does not apply because we have a separate conditional use standard under section twenty-five dash twenty-four point two for mixed use development. There are four conditions and density is not one of those requirements.
So there's, the, you're saying that there's a provision, an additional provision where this B one variance that's stated that I'm looking at the land use regulations is null and void. Can, I'd love to see the documentation of that. I don't understand. Can, can you explain that further?
Sure. If you go to section twenty-five dash twenty-four point two subsection M, that's where the conditional use criteria for mixed use development in the B one and the B two district are. It's nothing about density.
All right, I'm just looking now. Pardon me for my moment. I, I guess my question is, if you look at the original, I don't know if it was a memo, it was sent out by the Nishwan Group. It mentioned specifically, it flagged that as an issue. And that's in the record. So I'm.
There was, there was, there was a second evaluation that was done after some changes and that was on the website.
Yeah, he's talking about the August twelfth, twenty twenty-four Nishwan Group memorandum. But then we also got a subsequent report where that was revised. I think there were revisions. Mr. Hazel might be able to explain that.
I'm sorry. Yes, that was, there was a, there was a, a report that superseded that one report. Some of the information that that report was based on was not complete. And I think I do mention that in.
I believe it just no longer appeared. It wasn't, it wasn't explained. It just wasn't in the subsequent document.
Yes, but that, 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 well, I'm, I'm putting it on the record now that that was not complete information. And based on the full extent of the information that I was provided, this is the report that represents my report on this application and this property. This is a report dated September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Was it withdrawn? Is that what you would say, Jerry?
Yes, it, the information was, some of the information was not corrected. I understood it. And so this replaced it.
Okay. I mean, I, I guess I'm just a little bit confused because I, I didn't see any documentation of, you know, what had changed in terms of that. But I suppose that's just part of the.
Process is part of the process, sir.
Part of the process. I, I was just also wondering while I, I have your ear. If the paid parking was a principal use, is there, was there an approval for that?
Mr. Barton, is that a question for me? The answer is I don't know.
Okay. Okay, tricky. Sorry, I'm a layperson and I'm just trying to sort through this.
You're doing great. Do you have any other questions, sir?
I guess, I mean, while I'm up here, if, maybe since Maurice was willing to, to jump in or prior just to, to move it along and not waste people's time. That could be a question for Maurice. If the paid parking was a principal use, is there an approval for that?
It's not part of this application. We have to move on.
I see. All right. I mean, I, I guess the rest will, I'll, will be in testimony. And I'll, I'll save for public comment in regarding to this.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any member of the public have any more questions for Mr. McDonough's testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Stan Shapiro. Please state your name and address again for the record.
Stan Shapiro, my address is Twelve Edge Hill Road. If you give me one second, I want to see what my note, collect my thoughts. I wasn't ready. Oh, okay. So, so Mr. McDonough, I, my understanding is that the applicant has a current commercial medical office and he's, the part of the plan is for him to use this, this Main Street property to relocate to this Main Street property to expand his, his space. Is there any reason why the, the present, why the present structure at two levels would not be adequate for, I mean, why, why can't, if he's moving his business, does he, why does he have to add another level and seven, and seven additional residential units and, and ask for another, another variance and obstruct the view of neighboring properties, et cetera? That's the application before us. That's the application before us. So we have to. No, I'm trying to get this. He's, the, the applicant, he says that, you know, they're, they're that it's justifying the use, that the, that the use is, that the use of the, that it's a benefit to have this use. And I'm, this is this additional variance. And my question is, what, why can't the, the applicant use the building as it is? Or isn't it adequate for his medical office? Sir, there's an application before the planning board. The goal is to find out how this application fits into the area. The, the thought process of why this is that tall or not is not the question. My question is, would the present building as it is be adequate for, for the, the applicant's use of it as his, as his? You have to listen to me. That's not the application before us. We're looking at this application. The applicant has come before us with this, with this building. Okay, ask a question about the testimony, please. I think that I'm asking about his, his test. I, I, I think I'm going to the, directly to his testimony is that, so, so the. Mr. McDonough. So, so could he, could he, could he have his medical office there without adding seven residential units in another story? I think it's substantially changing it. Mr. McDonough, if you can answer it, say yes. If you can't answer it, say no.
I don't know.
That's the answer. Next question, sir. Okay. So the, the Main Street, the Main Street at that location is, is a heavily congested traffic roadway. Sir, please don't testify. Ask a question. Isn't it? Sir, he's the architect, he's the architect, sir. He's the planner. He's talking about the impact. He's talking about, he's made, he's given an opinion as to the impact. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I don't, I'm, I'm trying to get this, you know, I, I'm, I'm a resident here and a citizen, a long time citizen of West Orange. This is having an impact on my, on my life right there. I'm not, I'm not a professional planner, but I, but I can see. I know how long I have to wait because of the backup of traffic on Main Street, on the main things that I'm asking him if he's considered that. Okay, good. Good question. Did you consider the traffic congestion impact? Or was there, was there a traffic impact study that you performed or someone else involved in this, in this, in the application process and the planning process that you've reviewed on the traffic impact study? On the impact on, on the back of a traffic and the bottleneck of traffic on, on Main Street, you know, at the, at the area of this, of this property?
Sure, Mr. Shapiro. Planners look at things comprehensively. We rely upon the expertise of other witnesses. You just heard before me, Mr. Downey gives sworn testimony under oath as a licensed traffic engineer that this project will not cause a substantial degradation in the level of service of the adjacent roadway.
I did not hear that. I did not hear, Mr., I, I did not hear the, the, the prior witness testify about any actual traffic impact study. He talked about, you know, a couple of books about what would, what might be allowed, but not, not an impact study. You know, what, what the numbers of parking spaces, that's all he talked about was the number of parking spaces. And he said, he said, but, but he didn't talk about the, what is, how long it's backing up and how much more that would, that would have adding that traffic there and the ingress and egress from that, from that property. At the last meeting we were had, that came up and, and I was under, under the impression that the applicant was, was recommended to get a traffic impact study. And I came here and I've sat here for three hours. I have not heard that.
I am, I am not going to question the credibility of Mr. Downey. I'm not a traffic engineer.
So you did not see any actual, you know, you know, empirical study? Where, what is the average time of backup now and how that would be impacted by adding this, the extra floor, getting the variance, adding the seven extra residential units and, and, and as well as the traffic? Is that your testimony?
I, I didn't, Mr. Shapiro. I'm not a traffic expert.
Okay, but wouldn't that have a bearing on, on what is the impact to the community? Whether this was, this, in your opinion, doesn't this have, have, wouldn't that bear on whether this would be a benefit or a detriment to the neighboring community?
Mr. Shapiro, as, as I'm here before you now, I have the testimony, the uncontroverted expert opinion of a traffic expert that this will not cause a substantially adverse traffic impact. It's a boutique scale development. There are many other permitted uses that could go here. I rely upon the credibility and reliability of, of that testimony. It's uncontroverted by, by an expert at this point.
I, you, I did not hear that testimony at all. He did not say that it would not have an impact on the, on the traffic. I heard him say that, that it, that it would allow, that the law allows so many parking spaces.
Mr. Shapiro, the record will speak for itself and the board can give the, the weight that it wishes to, to the application.
So would, was any impact study done about how, what would be the impact of added, of the variance, this application and the extra seven residential uses on the sewer line wastewater capacity? That's, that, that property is right on the bottom of my sewer line. When I have, when I, I have experienced many times over the, over the past years where, when, at certain times backup and flooding into my, into my basement when there is an overflow of water from say a heavy rain. What was the, have, have, have you and the planners and the planners on this? And have you, what consideration have you given? And what study has actually been done as to the impact on the, on the wastewater capacity?
These are probably. I believe, I believe that was a question that was answered already by our engineer, Donna Bullock, who has run the sewage calculations and those have been provided to the board.
That was done what, last time? No, this time. She testified today. And the first person who testified this evening was Donna Bullock, the engineer, and she testified about the sewer calculation, sir. Let me see, but, but that was calculations. It wasn't, what was, my question is, was there any actual study done of what, of what's going on now? And, and how it would be impacted by adding? Besides just, just theoretical, you know, from the book? Because I'm living for real. I'm having it in my basement. Okay, sir, we're gonna, if the, Mr. Zerbo, if you know, say yes. If you don't, say no.
I don't know.
Okay. Now, again, I'm talking about real studies. What, what do you know about that commercial use of those large trucks that are there right now that you saw in your photograph? You know where they're. That's not part of their application. They're gonna be gone. Yeah, but what do they, where, where do they come from?
Mr. Shapiro, I, I don't know.
You see, you don't know whose trucks those are, that there are, those, those trucks are, are actually being used in the neighborhood by, by currently by businesses in the neighborhood, right? In the community?
Mr. Shapiro, I, I just don't know.
Okay, so do you know where they're going to be located next? Are they going to be parked on the street? Mr. Shapiro, they're, they're not owned by the applicant and they're not part of this application. Therefore, whoever owns them will move them and move them wherever they should be legally parked. Can I ask you, Mr. McDonough, in your, in, when you're, when you were assessing the impact, whether the benefit or the detriment, the pros or the cons, will this, I, I, I took a note of what was, what was the legal language, but I'm, I'm, I'm not seeing, seeing exactly. language, but I'm, I'm, I'm not seeing, seeing exactly what, give me one second. The impact. So, so, so did you consider in, in terms of whether this was the, the benefit or, and, and the detriment or the, or the negative impact on the community of where these existing commercial vehicles will have to relocate? If, if we have this increased use here?
That was not part of my analysis, no.
Do you know if the, well, back off of that.
Mr. Shapiro, do you have another question, sir?
Tried to check my notes.
You want to take your time, come back, let somebody else ask a question?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. McDonough's testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Rita Di Matteo. Please state, there you go. Rita, you're muted. There you go.
Just unmuted myself. Yes, thank you. Hi, I'm Rita Di Matteo and I live at 11 Rocky Way. Mr. McDonough, I was wondering if you could expand a little bit on some of the things that you said where you spoke about looking at the site holistically and sensitivity to the area. I'm, you know, I'm sure you're aware that the backside of the building is very close to the boundary of Llewellyn Park, which is a historic district, you know, listed with the National Register, State Register. And, you know, the, the entire historic district of Llewellyn Park, including its buildings, its landscape and listed properties are considered to be, you know, significant for its history and, and, and worthy of preservation. Did you consider at all that, that the the neighborhood behind this building, which is the historic district? Might figure into your thinking about the site holistically?
Yes, Ms. Di Matteo, Di Matteo, I'm sorry.
Di Matteo.
This is, this is on the website. I did not take this picture, but I assume this is under the project file. This is a view from, I believe it's the Barton residence. This is what Llewellyn Park sees of the building now.
And now we'll see another story on top of that, which, you know, that's kind of adding insult to injury.
Right now you see exposed mechanical equipment, which is contrary to what your zoning ordinance wants. Raising the building up will hide these mechanical structures and there's going to be a three foot parapet, so these nuisance uses are going away as part of this development proposal. In my view, that's a much better integration with the neighborhood. Building's not going higher than some of these trees that you see here, so there is a softening, if you will, in terms of other structures in the landscape. And coupled with raising the building up one floor, it's going to be within that 35 foot threshold. There's going to be facade improvements as well. This is an older building that's showing its age.
You know, it's also going to, the added height, wouldn't you say the added height also will have an impact on privacy? Because you've got now two, two floors of, of housing, you know, of apartments that are going to have windows, you know, looking out. And, and the building, I understand that the building, I, I'm not sure what the technical term is. I guess you called it a hardship. Is already there. That, you know, that, that is a hardship for us. But, but wouldn't you say that it would impact the privacy of, of the people living on the other side? I mean, doesn't it impact, impact the privacy of the people on Main Street? Because that's, you know, that's a, a commercial street, but from this perspective, from the perspective of, you know, the other side, it, it certainly would have an impact on privacy, wouldn't you say?
Well, I see four windows that right now have a direct line of sight into these backyards. So there are, there are views into the backyard now. This could be.
And there will be more, right? There, there will be double, I would, I would guess if you put another floor on there. I, I don't, I'm not looking at the pictures of the, the renderings of the, of the proposal, but, you know. You said before, you, you did talk about privacy. I, I don't have the exact words that you had, so I, I wanted to ask you to comment on, on that aspect of it, of the added height impact on privacy and, you know, and, and the neighborhood on, on the other side as opposed to looking toward Main Street.
I think about the use. It's residential against residential. This could be zoned for a commercial use. This could be a two-story bar right here, an upper portion and a lower. And certainly that could have an impact on privacy impacting this with a permitted commercial use, much more than residential against residential.
Okay, thank you for your reply.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. McDonough's testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Gerard Anthony. Please state your name and address for the record.
Gerard Anthony, 18 Wildwood Avenue.
Go right ahead, sir.
Sure. Mr. McDonough, you said there was an impact to the residents. I'm assuming that you, you presume that that impact is negative because you said you proposed mitigating, mitigating factors like the vegetation. Is that correct?
No, that those factors are there to mitigate any impact with that additional story.
So, so the, go ahead.
All I was going to say, Mr. Anthony, is that those structures that are there are for the beneficiaries, the beneficiaries of those structures are the neighbors. They're there to mitigate impact of a commercial use that's immediately adjacent to their properties.
So you're, so, and I'm following up a little bit on what, what Rita just asked as well too, but so going up another floor, you don't believe that there's any negative impact to going up another story to the, to property that's directly behind the proposed structure?
All land use planning is a balancing. What's nice about this, it takes the unknown out of the equation. Again, we don't know what repurposing of that space could be. We're talking about three additional residential units on the top there. As opposed to filling that second floor with some sort of commercial use that could certainly be much more impactful than three additional residential.
But is this just a yes or no? Do you think that it can have a negative impact?
So can you, do I think what, going up higher can have a negative impact?
Right, a negative impact because you, you, in your original testimonies, you said that, you know, there would be some impact to the, to the surrounding area. And my question to you is, is that impact going to be negative? Because again, you originally said that there would be some mitigating factors for there. So I'm assuming that you presume that there would be some negative impact, not just impact, a negative impact to the surrounding area. Particularly the, particularly, particularly, Mr. The, the, the residents that we just showed from behind the structure.
Right. All development, all change has some impact. There's no, there's no question about that, Mr. Anthony. The test for the board, what our land use says, is that a substantially adverse impact? And, and I know what the public's concerned about, privacy, aesthetics, views, those, those kinds of things. Based on all the testimony, that's for the board to determine if the impact of that additional story will create a substantially adverse impact on the community. There's no doubt that it will have impact. It's change. I believe the impact, in my opinion, is negligible if any. But again, that's, that's my opinion based on the evidence and, and my understanding of the law.
Right. And the, and the, the pictures that you originally sent before the one that was just posted, I noticed that there wasn't any pictures from Llewellyn Park from the ground side. I don't know if that, the picture you just posted, was that a picture that you took or that was a picture that, that Johnny took from his residence?
I can tell you, I did not trespass on anybody's property. I did, I did not take that picture. So I don't know who took the picture, but that was not me. But it's on the website. That's why I showed it.
Okay, got it. I just thought it was important because what I thought was interesting is, I don't want to make a comment, but it, I'm not sure how, how, how can you get a sense for the, the view from Llewellyn Park if you're using pictures taken from a drone or from however high, you know, up in the air? There was a lot of assumptions about what the view would look like from Llewellyn Park, but if you're using it, taking a picture from a drone, obviously people don't live in a drone. They're gonna live in a house. So the views, that view is not going to be accurate, correct?
Mr. Anthony, I understand that. We do the best we can. I, I am not gonna hover that drone outside someone's bedroom window and see what, what they see from there. We're trying to get a, we're trying to get a sense and I actually have photographs. I have the benefit here of someone took a photograph of the view from their property. And I think it speaks for itself.
Right, but I guess my, again, you're the one coming up with the plan. You're the one making the, making the determination. It would seem like you would need to have the view from, from the ground to be able to make a, to, to make a better assessment. Was there any, was there any study in terms of the impact of sunlight or shade going up another story to that, to the residents that are, again, directly behind the structure? I didn't hear anything, any, any testimony about sunlight or shade? Particularly, we're talking about the view.
No, because the 30 foot, the 35 foot height is permitted in the zone.
But would it, but would it still have an impact on the, on the sunlight or shade?
Again, that's the height that's allowed in the zone. So that's, that's contemplated in the zone scheme.
Okay, but I'll, I'll take that, I'll take that as a no. Secondly, somewhat following up on, since you've referenced in West Orange's master plan, are you familiar with land use regulation of Township of West Orange, section 25? Or paragraph 25, section 21?
I don't have it in front of me.
Got it. I'll quote it for you. Says the, the purpose is to protect, conserve and preserve the unique character history of the township residential areas. Particular attention is drawn to the area known as Llewellyn Park, America's first planned residential community. Are you familiar with that?
Yes, that's, that's very common planning language that we see in master plans.
Right, but you would agree that that particular language is particular to Llewellyn Park, since it's recognized as a historical community and one of the first planned ones in the country?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Right, but you, you would agree that there's potential to have a negative impact from this use, potentially?
I, I think, I think this is circular. I already answered the question about negative impact.
Okay, no further question.
Thank you. So the way in public have any questions for Mr. McDonough about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Larissa. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, my name's Larissa Daiga. I live at 11 Edge Hill Road. I have a few questions for you guys, for the planner. I was wondering how many affordable housing units will there be in this building?
I, I don't know the number offhand.
I believe that testimony was already elicited and we would take that as condition of approval, that we would fully comply with the affordable housing requirements of the Township of West Orange.
I, I think our planner can give you a number, because I was talking to Mr. Hazel earlier about this. When, when we get to Mr. Hazel.
The, the town ordinance requires 20% of the total number of units. So in this case, it would be two, would be, sorry, would be 1.4, I believe, which is under five, point five, so it would be one unit.
One unit. Okay, thank you. Next question, because you have the experience as a planner and you were talking about the whole time holistically and what could be possible. How many empty commercial use buildings do you feel are appropriate for Main Street? Like at what point do you feel like it becomes, well, just how many empty commercial use buildings are appropriate for a Main Street?
I'm sorry, he hasn't, he hasn't looked all, all over through the entire Main Street. So that's, that's beyond the scope of his testimony.
Okay, well, how about just across the street then, in the Edison Lofts spaces? I know there are a couple, I think, but I believe a couple of empty places as well as other places on Main Street. And I was just wondering if you have any experience with, you know, helping areas make plans for their, you know, that affects the community positively in which too many empty spaces are to avoid empty spaces, which can create a more negative impact than a positive impact? Do you have experience with this?
I did not.
Type of planning?
I did not consider that as part of my analysis.
Okay, cool. Thanks. I was wondering if it was standard practice for, like a project like this landscape architect to say like, oh, well, the landscaping back there is, is behind the building is not, is going to be up to the residents who live like literally right there. Is that standard practice? Or does the landscape architect take more of an active role in, in the whole perimeter of the space that they're planning?
The landscape architect, landscape architect works within the confines of the space that it has. The space is, is not there.
Right, exactly. Okay, so have you seen the photographs of the shade already just as the building is, the shade impact into the resident that's abutting against the building? Have you seen the photos from the residents? They were sharing, they tried to share with the presentation, I don't know if they were shown, of the actual shade?
I believe I've seen them, no.
Okay, the, the shade goes significantly already into the yard.
Ma'am, don't, you can't, ma'am, ma'am, you can testify. Thank you. You can ask him a question about his testimony, please.
Okay, what, what kind of considering that you have experience with planning around commercial buildings? What, as a landscape architect certified person, what would you suggest that these people grow considering that there's shade? So there's going to be even more shade, it like halfway into their yard, which is a half acre. By the way, it's not Llewellyn Park big. Do you have any suggestions, since you are experienced?
If I were working for the neighbors, I'm going back to the exhibit I presented. Actually, go back to the one the neighbor took. Looks to me like there's a pretty good evergreen right there by the shed that's doing pretty well.
Yeah, definitely. So you're suggesting more evergreens?
It's like that guy's doing pretty well.
New evergreens in an even taller building shade is an interesting suggestion.
Like a, this looks like a spruce tree to me or a fir tree, which will grow 30 to 40 feet high. Look on the right there. Look what's going on.
Yeah, but not a young, not a young tree. I just planted a blue spruce and it has to be.
Let's ask questions about the application.
Sure, 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 sure. So then my other question was, if, I was just wondering if you've actually like ever walked into Llewellyn Park along Edge Hill Road?
I've been in Llewellyn Park, yes.
Okay, have you noticed that where you are speaking about it is not as elevated as you? It's not as elevated as you seem to project it to be? Have you noticed that, that that's actually at the bottom of this edge of the hill that we're all on? The property that is the most affected?
I'm not sure of the question. The, the grade of this site is lower than the home behind it.
Yes, but not much. I just didn't, I just wanted to be sure you've actually seen the actual space. That, that was my question, if you had actually gone in and taken a look. And then so then you mentioned that if the building were to fulfill the zoning laws that are, you know, to actually follow the actual zoning laws, it, that would cause, it would bring the building to the. it, that would cause, it would bring the building to the forward and it would bring things like trash collection. And, um, like I think you said, maybe compressors or loud machinery to the back of the building, which would be more, uh, of a problem for the neighboring residents than having the building there. Like you were, you were stating that the building there was actually better than that. And the way you were stating it sounded a little bit like a threat. Was this your intention?
No, not at all. All I'm saying is, one of the things planners have to think about is what the zone says is okay. And what could be, and I always, when I get questions like this from the public, there could be unintended consequences. Who knows what, what's next? I, I don't know. I, I don't know at all. I'm just saying, you have a building there now. The applicant wants to go up. The parking is on the other side. The reverse could happen with a new build. That's very common.
Yeah, okay. It just the way, just the way it was being said.
Didn't mean anything by it.
Okay, okay, that's good. Uh, thank you. That makes me feel better, actually. Um, and, um, then, um, my other question is, um, feel if this project was being prepared, was being, uh, proposed immediately in your backyard, like immediately?
Ma'am, we're not going there. Sorry, we're not going there.
That's okay. And my last, my last, um, my last question is, um,
Ma'am, you have to talk into the microphone.
Yeah, I know. I just, uh, you kept presenting many opinions as though they were facts. Um, such as that, um, the building height would create harmony because would be more harmonious in the space because of the building across the street is also three stories, et cetera, and, um, uh, which is not necessarily true. In fact, you don't want things of similar heights right next to one another because variety helps break up the space and it actually promotes more harmony. So I was, but that's one of many things you said. Other things including, um, you know, this would not affect the families that live here.
Ma'am, you have to ask a question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting there. And so I was just wondering if, um, if you were aware, like, was it not the case that you were presenting many opinions as, of your own opinions as fact?
Ma'am, he's, he's, uh, he's an expert for the applicant. The job of all experts and professionals of the applicant.
Yeah.
Come to the planning board and based on information that they glean from what they do to present their opinions. We, we on the planning board understand that these are opinions based on their expertise.
Okay, as long as everybody knows that, because we are not aware of that. I'm a professor of design. I'm, I, I would say I am a expert of, uh, the design principles such as harmony. And so I just wanted to make sure that we all you know, understood, because it was just being presented in a way that, um, made it seem like, oh yeah, everyone there who, it, I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
We absolutely, I, I appreciate.
Thank you.
And we, we do understand their, these are their opinions.
Okay, fantastic. That's really good to know because I can tell you that this is having a very negative impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do any mem, other members of the public have any questions for Mr. McDonough on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have, uh, Lenny Carr. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, this is, uh, this is Lenny Carr calling. My address is eighty-three Mountain Avenue. I've been a resident of West Orange for twelve years, a proud resident. Um, um, the first que, so first of all, thank everyone on the planning board. I know it's a late night. Um, we are not, uh, paid experts. We are not professionals. Uh, we are residents, um, stating our opinions. So I appreciate all the planning board's time to hear us out. Uh, you've been very patient, um, in doing so. So, um, I just wanted to express thanks first and foremost. Uh, Mr. McDonough, I have a few questions, if I may.
Sure, Mr. Carr.
Right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. McDonough. This first, um, you know, what style would you say that this, uh, uh, new application is in? The building's style? I didn't hear you mention it in your testimony, but I'm wondering if you have an opinion as to what the style is. Is it modern? Is it historic? Is it, you know, is it contemporary? Is it classic? Is it Edwardian? I, I just, I don't know what it is. And I'm wondering as an, as a planning expert, if you have an architectural opinion of what the style is.
Uh, I don't, that would be more architect, more of a question for the architect.
Would, would you, but you've looked at it. You've seen it, correct?
Yes.
Okay, would you say it's historic? In nature?
Uh, again, I, I don't know.
Okay, you know, you showed us, Mr. McDonough, um, a number of pictures on the website on, on the same side of the street of this proposal, right? Um, and this proposal, as we know, is for, to add a story, to make it a three-story. Did you see any other three-story homes on that side of the street where this is being proposed? Or are they old, all older homes at two and a half story in height?
The latter.
They're all two and a half story, right?
I don't know if they all are.
But, but you showed us a picture of all these beautiful old homes on Main Street, on that side of the street. And in that picture, they were all two and a half story homes.
Mr. Carr, you know what's out there. You see, you've heard.
No, no, I'm, is that a fair question, Mr. McDonough? You're avoiding the question I was asking. Is that, is that a fair question that
Not a fair.
Asking you if it's a two and a half story, if they're all, if, are there any other three-story homes on that? You, you showed us, you counted the stories across the street. I was wondering if you would do us the courtesy of counting the stories on the same side of the street.
There is an auto store, uh, an auto service yard loaded with cars right up to residential property, two or three lots away.
Mr. McDonough, can you call up the picture for us, please, if I might? Just so we're all looking at the same thing.
Right there. Right there, you've got a flat-roofed building. You've got a series of flat-roofed buildings.
Are those three stories or are those two and a half stories, Mr. McDonough?
They're lower.
They're two and a half stories and they're lower. They're closer to Main Street, correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, so my question is, and, and now you're asking for a third story to go on here, right?
Yes, I am. Yes, we are.
In your testimony, you're saying that that's consistent, right? Um, with what's around the property. You showed us what was across the street, right? Um, which was the, which was the Historic Edison Museum, which is on the National Historic Place of Register, correct?
Correct, and I showed you this view. This is not.
And you showed us, right, right. And I'm just, Mr. McDonough, please, uh, uh, you know, again, I'm not an expert. I mean, I'm not trying to be combative. I'm just asking you questions. And on the other side of the street, you showed us other homes that were three stories in height. Um, but those were consistent with an existing warehouse that was there that was originally part of the Edison plant, right? Historic in nature. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, you know, and everyone's trying to make sure Main Street looks beautiful. And you were saying that, you know, this is part of making Main Street look beautiful. But my question is, you're saying that there's no impact. You gave us this beautiful long speech about, you know, not having an impact. But am I right looking at this picture that you're saying that adding a third story to this where there's only two and a half stories on this building is going to have zero visual impact on the historic nature of Main Street?
Not the test, not zero.
I'm not asking it's a test. I'm asking you your opinion. And so I'm asking your opinion. When you told us that there was no greater impacts, I'm asking you, in your opinion, since you opined on so many things, does this have any visual impact on that side of the street if you go to a third story?
Mr. Carr, I have to take it back to the test. That's my job. The test is whether there will be a substantial, substantially negative impact here. Adding a, adding twelve feet to that building, in my view, does not create a substantially negative impact on the historic character of the area.
Oh, okay. Well, uh, you know, Mr. McDonough, I take a different view where everything on that side of the street, I think, is intentionally two and a half stories. And now you're adding a third story, which would be inconsistent. So my next question would be, you know, do you think that adding a third story would have any precedent-setting, uh, effects on that side of the Main Street? Whereas if you're called for future testimony, I, I see members of the planning board nodding their head no. But my, my, my question on this is, once you add a third story, everybody is going to add to that side of the street and say, there's three stories here. Why can't we have three stories when we're building the next building? So I do think that there is a precedent-setting concern, which is a negative impact as well. The other thing, Mr. McDonough, that you asked is, you testified earlier that there is no shadow or light impact. Did you not say that earlier in your testimony?
Uh, that's correct, yes.
Okay, so, but, and you were asked the question by my, my good neighbors on this call. Um, you were looking at no shadow and light impact from what? The Main Street perspective or on the historic nature of the Llewellyn Park community?
The sun, as we know, rises in the east. That would be on the opposite side of Main Street, travels across the sky in an arc to the south. So that would be shadow effects, uh, in the, in the morning time on the Llewellyn Park neighborhood.
Right, so it will cast a shadow on the Llewellyn Park side if you go with this higher thirty-five foot, which is, this is set back all the way in the back. Um, so, um, I, I, I just, I'm, I'm confused, right? If you go an extra height, will there be a larger shadow cast on the Llewellyn Park side? Uh, yes or no?
Will there be a larger impact? Yes, there will be more than, okay, there will be a lot than the current condition, yes.
All right, so hang on one second. I just want to take an accounting. So I do think that there's going to be a visual impact on that side of the street. There is going to be a shadow impact on that street. Um, there is going to be precedent-setting impact on future sort of like, um, plans. Um, do you think it's going to have an impact, Mr. McDonough, um, on property values, um, behind that house? So
I'm sorry, we gotta stop there. He didn't testify about property values out of his scope of expertise.
I, I'm sorry.
Scope of expertise, sir.
Uh, out of his scope of expertise. Okay, so we're not testifying. He, he did, uh, um, Mr. Bagoff, I, Mr. Chair, you did say that he did testify that impacts, right? He'd mentioned the lawsuit case where if the impacts or the benefits outweigh the, uh, the, the, the impacts, then you should vote in favor of this. Did he not, Mr. Bagoff?
He testified. Ask him what he testified.
No, did you testify to that fact, Mr. McDonough, that, you know, if the, if the, if the benefits outweigh the impacts that, uh, that you should vote to allow this to, to continue? Did you say that, Mr. McDonough? Did I hear that correctly? You did, correct. And, and, and I'm sorry, again, uh, Chairman Bagoff, I'm not, I'm not an expert, but I, I do think property value impact is an impact, a negative impact, a deleterious impact on this project going forward. So I was speaking to it in that scope. So I do think that there's context there.
Nobody spoke about the context of property values. He did not speak about the content. We didn't speak about the context. I'll tell you what, let's finish up. Go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bagoff. I just, I, property value for me is negative impact. So, um, um, and so I just, I'm, I'm, again, I'm looking at, you know, um, these impacts that were raised. Uh, again, the visual impact, why does this need to go to three stories when everything on that side of the street is two and a half story in a historic neighborhood where there's the Edison effect? I, I think that, again, to Mr. McDonough's testimony, I think that that's contradictory. I also think he testified that there's no shadow and light um, impact, um, on that property. And then we showed that if you examine it uh, from the Llewellyn Park side, that there is an impact. And I think that, you know, Mr. McDonough is only taking the view from a Main Street perspective, but not looking at the historic nature of what's happening from the Llewellyn Park perspective. Um, I do think that this is inconsistent with zoning effect, but I will, I will end it there. Again, I will thank the planning committee, but I do think that this has material deleterious impacts on the Llewellyn Park community. And you're just looking at it from this perspective, which is the Main Street perspective and not the other side of the perspective. Uh, and all the testimony has been one-sided. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. McDonough on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Amanda Barton. You have to unmute. There you go. Go ahead, ask her a question. Or state your name and address again, please. I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Amanda? All right, we're gonna come back to you. Oh, wait. I think we can hear you now.
Okay, are we good?
Yes.
Okay, hi, I'm Amanda Barton. I'm at Ten Edge Hill Court. Um, I'd like to start by saying that I'm the one who, who, uh, took the photo that was displayed earlier. And there were actually several other photos that are on the agenda that I would, um, like to, um, you know, have the board see possible. I don't know if those, can those be pulled up?
I think Ms. Barton, that can come in through your, when, when you have the floor.
Are you using the photograph to ask him questions about something he brought up?
I'd like to, I'd like to show the, the, the shadow from, and I submitted them. They're on the agenda. I don't know how to access the agenda.
Okay.
On the, I, I have a photo. I can share my screen, but.
Which, is it the same photo on the agenda?
There are, there are several of them. There's four, and then there's one that was left out that shows the shadow, and I was hoping to be able to screen share that.
Okay, that would be up to the chairman if he wants to let, allow that we would have to mark that as an addition.
Yeah, we'll have to ma, uh, make it an exhibit. And then it'll have, that Ms. Barton will have to, uh, provide that to the board secretary.
It was, it was provided in the same email that the other photos came from that are in the agenda now.
It didn't make it onto the agenda?
It did not.
Okay, so could you do me a favor since I don't know how it happened? It could have just been cut off by accident?
Uh huh.
And you show your picture, um, now, we'll mark it as a separate exhibit because it wasn't on the agenda. And then if you could, please just send that, I, that individual photograph to our board secretary, Gemma Lett. She'll make sure it gets on the agenda. But for tonight, if you could just, if you could share your screen and show everybody.
Absolutely, I'm.
The pictures, I do have them. Uh, she sent them to, uh, it's just because they haven't been on the record. That's why they have not.
Oh, okay. All right. So we, we do have them. So Ms. Barton, you can share your screen to show the quest, the photographs that you want to use to ask your questions of the applicant's planner. So go right ahead.
Okay, I, uh, I just don't see an option for screen share here. Um,
It should be on the bottom of your screen.
It should be a green arrow facing upwards.
I have it.
Okay.
No, it doesn't seem to be an option for me. Um,
Okay.
Is there any way to pull it up from the email that I sent?
Well, she doesn't have the email available to her right now, so we're gonna have to move on.
Uh.
You can ask, you can ask other questions if you have any.
Well, the, the other photos are on the agenda. Can those be shown?
Yes, yes.
Where?
Which, which photos? I can try to pull them up.
Uh, I think they're labeled as coming from our address.
So photos ten and.
Photographs provided by residents of ten and fourteen Edge Hill. So there's one, two, three, four that are on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are you seeing screen one? Okay. Can you, are you seeing?
No.
Backyard fence?
No.
It says start screen sharing. And there we go.
Okay, so that's one.
Uh, yeah, it's zoomed in a little, so it's hard to see, uh.
Now I lost it.
And now you're showing the agenda on the screen.
Yeah, that's why, sorry.
Good question. Are the, the, um, are the pictures that you're talking about, the ones already posted on the agenda, or you're talking about new submissions you did?
No, I emailed five total and only four made it onto the agenda.
Okay, is this one of them?
This is one of them, yep.
Would you like to talk about this one?
Yeah, I just wanted to give us a, a visual, some context of exactly how, how close and looming over our yard this building is. Um, you can show the others.
Yeah, well, they've been on the agenda. The members of the planning board have looked at these.
Okay, okay. So then I just wanted to.
Is that fence on your yard?
This is, uh, the, the fence between our yard and Donna Uers, who was at fourteen Edge Hill. Um, so, you know, I'm just pointing out this, this, the vegetation that has been mentioned as a mitigating factor. Uh, you know, these are deciduous trees that don't provide any coverage in the, in the winter time. Um,
Sorry.
Okay.
So my question, my question with these, with these photos as sort of a backdrop and context for for Mr. McDonough? Is about the um, the buffer requirement that I believe applies to properties uh in a non-residential district that abut the residential district, which I I believe is applicable here. W one district is a non-residential district, is it not?
It is a, it is a zone that allows for residential, for non-residential uses and mixed use.
And uh, and it it does abut a residential district, Llewellyn Park, in this case, is it correct?
It does.
And so the the separately from the rear setback requirement, which we've already established, is is, this is not in compliance with. Um, there, is there not also a buffer standard that applies to the property in question?
Yes.
Okay, and and what what is that in feet?
Twenty feet.
Okay, so um, this is required by the West Orange ordinance. The buffer standard is in addition to the building setback, so so neither of these things is is being met, correct?
Correct, but it's not cumulative. In other words, it's not applied as twenty feet plus thirty feet.
Sure, sure. No, my question is more that the 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 proposal essentially needs relief or variance for for both the buffer standard and the rear yard setback.
The the short answer is yes. The building is there. You can see it with your own two eyes in that photograph. It it's been there since nineteen seventy-nine. The applicant didn't put it there. It's there. It's not going away.
Right, so I I guess, what is the, what is the valid planning justification for for why the applicant should be entitled to add a third story when it's already in violation of both the buffer and the rear setback standards? And then on top of that, uh, you know, there's, there's also the issue of part of the buffer requirement is that there's a, um, you know, in perpetuity, a a strip of trees or vegetation that adequately blocks the view of this building to be maintained. And um, I feel that I've heard you say that essentially the responsibility for that is on us because you guys don't have room to do it. Am I understanding that correctly?
The building is there. It's right there. If the, if the neighbors don't like the way the building looks now, the screening would have to be on the residential side. That's, that's all I'm saying. Th- this building was built without buffering. If you look at the nineteen seventy-nine aerial photograph, this building appeared. I'm assuming it's it's lawfully existing. It appears.
Yes, it's lawfully existing, and this wouldn't be a problem, I guess, uh, if there wasn't this proposal in place to make it even taller. Adding insult to injury, that's the point.
The applicant is proposing to put renovation into the building to improve this facade, to hide those mechanical equipment that you now see on the roof and the the noise and nuisances that would go with it. And by going higher, you actually lessen the vantage of the rooftop, plus you're getting a parapet on the top.
But it isn't, isn't it also true that another layer, in addition to what you see here of windows looking out onto our yard, that there would be an even further invasion of privacy with another row of residential units? People being in there twenty-four seven, looking right into the yard.
Not more than if if this lower space that you're looking at were converted to a bar.
The second floor, yes, and there, it would be much easier to grow vegetation high enough to block the view. But we're talking about an almost thirty-six-foot building that, you know, it's very difficult with the power lines, with the lack of sunlight back there because of the building, to grow vegetation to that height.
I've given my reasons. I stand by my reasons. If if you disagree, you can certainly tell the board that when it comes time for public comment.
Okay, um. Uh, that's, I guess that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to have to carry this meeting, the next meeting. So uh. Can we carry this to the next public meeting?
Yeah, it would be our next meeting, our next regular meeting is May seventh, and that would be via Zoom.
Okay, uh, are all your experts available, sir?
Um, John, are you available?
I'm booked that night. Um, I would say let's carry to that date. And if um, if I can't move things, we'll carry it to the next night, but between now and then, I'll try to clear clear my schedule, but I am booked that night.
I do know that the uh, somebody contacted me, um, they have uh, the objectors have a planning expert. And it was either Mr. Steck or I think it was a Mr. O'Brien. I don't know whether that planner is available for the May seventh meeting. I I don't know who you can inquire. Was it you, Ms. Barton, that hired him, or was it somebody else?
Yes, it was us.
So maybe you can.
I can find out.
Yet that would be good.
Okay.
Patrick, will you be available?
Uh, yes, I'll be available on May seventh.
Uh, Jason?
Uh, yes, I'll be available all the time too.
Okay, Donna?
Yes, I'm available.
Okay, and Maurice, you're around?
Yes, I'm available.
Okay, if if we can, if we can carry it to the May seventh meeting.
With no further notice and waving, waving any time constraints.
Yes, up until the uh, May seventh meeting, yes.
Okay, application PB twenty-four fourteen, one seventy-two, one seventy-four, Main Street LLC, block eighty-three, lot one, and five dot oh one, zone B one, will be carried to the May seventh regular planning board meeting. No further notice will be required.
Real quick, do we know, what else is going to be on that night? Do we know?
And the applicant is waving time constraints to the May seventh meeting.
As of now, nothing has been scheduled.
Okay, so it's good. It's an open meeting, great.
Edition will be first, and if anything comes out, uh, the other application will be second.
Perfect. Okay, uh, members of the planning board, don't go anywhere, so that will conclude this portion of the meeting. Thank you, all members of the public. Thank you, Mr. Zerbal, and your uh applicant and your experts. We're looking for our the planning board members and our professionals to back-to-back meetings in May. Uh, Diana, do you have the dates?
Yeah, Sept, May, May.
Don't shoot me now. Wait till.
May fourteenth and May fifteenth. Um, there's no council meeting the Tuesday night before. Um, I haven't talked to the applicant's attorney to see if uh they're good or the um, Mr. Afrin, the objector's attorney. But the fourteenth and the fifteenth, if you could all look at your schedules, and I'll send out an email.
Yeah, we're just trying to get a straw poll to see what uh is available.
So if, right now, if anybody has uh something specific that you know off the top of your head, let us know, but otherwise, that's um, the thought. So don't, don't block me on your emails, right?
Fifteenth is a zoning board meeting, so the platform is not available.
Wait, the seventeen?
The fifteenth.
The fifteenth, that Thursday, the fifteenth is a zoning board meeting?
Yes.
All right, so then at least the fourteenth, it would be the, you know, we would have a meeting on the seventh, and then we'd have the following week in person. Or thirteenth and fourteenth, potentially, I guess if there's no council meeting.
Okay, we'll try for the, and that would be in person?
Yeah, that's for West Essex Highlands, yes.
Okay, so the May thirteenth, May fourteenth, uh, Diana will send you an email. Just please respond to her.
That's not going to be the last. There's going to be.
No, 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 it's not going to be the last.
One, and one of the things is our uh, the board engineer, um, he's uh, he's going to be at a commission until mid-June. So John has, won't be back until, until then, and um, I think he's gonna have a lot, uh, you're gonna have a lot of questions of him at the end, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
These would be starting at six thirty?
Starting at six thirty in in the town hall in person, yes.
The next regular planning board meeting will be held April ninth, twenty twenty-five, seven thirty, at seven o'clock PM via Zoom. The, what else have I got here? The next regular planning board meeting will be May seventh, twenty twenty-five, at seven thirty PM.
And there's a special on the thirtieth.
Sorry, I'm looking, I'm looking lost. And we have a meeting.
Oh, yeah, April thirtieth.
April thirtieth.
Right, yeah, so April thirtieth, and they also want May fourteenth and fifteenth?
Uh, the next planning board special meeting will be held, no, that's not it, uh, March twelfth.
If you just want to do the fourteenth, the Wednesday, I know nobody really wants to do any of these, but, you know, I can understand it. Since we're coming from April thirtieth, then you're having a regular meeting the next week, and then we're asking you to do a Wednesday, the fourteenth, and potentially a Tuesday.
And then if we miss a meeting, we gotta watch the recording. There'll be, even though there's no Zoom, there'll be a recording?
Yes, there'll be a recorder.
All right, unless it's broken.
Can we stick with?
The transcripts I gotta read, yeah, all right, nice.
Perfect, okay.
Chairman, can you go back to April ninth? I have on my calendar seven o'clock. I saw that on one of the emails.
Yeah, we have seven o'clock.
Okay.
Because we need a little extra time.
Yeah, keep in mind that the um.
Not Zoom.
Uh, six forty-five, like the, the audio.
Right. Yeah, and and don't forget, everybody to fill out your, uh, they'll send out the financial, um. To fill out for the state. And uh, hopefully you'll get that tomorrow. The next day is due by the last day of April. And thank you all for staying late, and I'm six minutes ahead of time. Uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Uh, Vice Chairman, all in favor?
So what do you mean, six minute, what happened to ten thirty?
No, no matters after ten thirty.
Oh, okay.
I misunderstood that.
Yes, thank you very much. Everybody have a wonderful evening. Have a great holiday.